...back of the back of Milton Times. And there's one, two, three houses on the right.
Who's running the team today?
Two houses on the left that are mixed use. So they're commercial on the first floor. They have residents on the site. They actually have apartments.
Okay, it looks like we're live now. Seven o'clock now. I'll call to order the meeting of the Board of Selectmen. First order of business is to review and approve our minutes.
I'll move that we approve the meeting minutes from April 12th, 2017, and September 15th, 2017, as written.
Second one. Any discussion?
No.
Seeing that there's no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we'll confirm our future meeting dates. The Board will meet again prior to the 2017 special town meeting on October 23rd, potentially the 24th and 26th, and if needed into the following week. November dates will be November 13th and November 27th. But the Board will also be meeting at the Master Plan Implementation Committee's meeting on October 16th to discuss the Milton Landing and Wharf area. So I think we're all in good shape right through November now. Citizen Speaker is our next agenda item. Do we have anyone here for Citizen Speaker this evening?
Emily.
Okay, Emily. Emily Martin, thank you.
So I'm Emily Martin of Florhope Avenue, and I'm here about another road race. So about six months ago, I fielded a call from somebody just general questions how to set up a road race. Went through probably a 20-minute conversation, you know, gave him some recommendations. Oh, Kevin's best. Sorry. But at the end of the call, I got his email address, and he said, you know, Mulcahy, Jay, and I said, like, John Mulcahy lived at 6th Hope Avenue? And he said, yeah. And I'm like, oh, Assemblywoman Martin of Florhope Avenue. And once I spoke to him and knew that it was him, I volunteered my time because his brother, Michael, passed away on December 1st of last year. He was 42 years old, and he had a heroic battle with substance abuse. He left behind his parents, Philip and Diane, his brothers, John and Ryan. And I never knew Mike, didn't even know of him until his passing, but having lived next door to John for the better part of a decade, you know, I volunteered to come if nobody else could. And so I reached out to his mother and just asked for anything that she wanted me to share. And she said that Michael was a wonderful son. He was my go-to son. He could do anything with his hands. He was a problem solver and figured out how to fix anything that needed to be fixed. I pray every day to give me the strength that he had, as he never gave up trying to overcome this horrible addiction. We're splitting the money raised between the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition and the Gavin Foundation House in South Boston. So currently, I believe we have over 150. I think we're reaching 200 or so participants. We have dozens and dozens and dozens of sponsors, local people. The reaction from everybody has been fantastic. So they're splitting the proceeds 50/50, so 50% to the Prevention Coalition to do education, to just try and, you know, make more people aware of this situation so that we can prevent other people from becoming addicted in the future. And the Gavin House in South Boston, Michael had stayed there several times during treatment. So the other component, you know, beyond prevention is treatment of people who are currently facing the addiction. So that is going to be on October 21st, a week from Saturday, 10:00 a.m. at Cunningham School. We're doing registration in the gym. We have a DJ. I think we're gonna have some, like, kids games. We're kinda trying to do a lot around it. I know that Milton High School and Pierce Middle School students who would like to participate, we are doing a fee waiver so they can run the race for free. So I think that's about all I have on that.
That's great information. Thank you. We normally don't comment till later on on Citizen Speaker, but I think it's probably fitting right now while you just finished. But the Milton Substance Abuse Coalition has done a tremendous job, and they're looking for ways to be supportive. The Mulcahy family, I happen to grow up with the children, and it's just a wonderful family. And I know this would mean the world to the Mulcahy's if we showed up in great numbers to help support this effort. And I think that, you know, every one of us can do our part, whether it be through social media, whether it be, you know, through the local newspapers, to promote this because I think it's good for our town, it's good for the young children in our schools to be aware of substance abuse and what it does mean and what the Coalition is doing. I also want to thank Denise and Desi Querly for stepping up and really helping promote this. They've done a lot of stuff with substance abuse for a long time, and I think, you know, their efforts are greatly appreciated. So thank you, Emily.
And sorry, can I also just say, the website is mikes5k.racewire.com. So that's where you can register for it. There's lawn signs around, there's a few signs around town. So if anybody has any questions, they can reach out to me at the office, I guess.
Great. Thank you again.
Look, may I add, just while we're on the topic of walks, there's a walk to benefit the Council on Aging this Saturday, October 14th, 9:00, at the Senior Center. And if anyone wants to sign up for that, there's a lot of information online and on Facebook, or you can call the Council on Aging. Busy time of year for walks, but that's a good one. Thanks for all your efforts on that, Emily.
Thank you for your efforts. Okay, item number five on our agenda is a quarter report from Bill Ritchie from our Consolidated Facilities Department. Good evening, Bill.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Bill.
Hey, Bill.
These quarters come so quick, don't they?
Busiest guy in town.
Well, it's not funny enough to be busy, by the way. Busy, you mean. So I think I passed over earlier, you know, a rolling sheet of what's going on at the Department, so if you just want me to hit some of the highlights.
That'd be great, thank you.
So obviously, the budget, we're also going through the budget process right now. We haven't submitted the full budget yet, but we did all the personnel portion of the budget, that's completed, and that's on track. And the budget, I believe, is due in November. And the five-year capital reporting for both, I do both school and towns, and that's both put forward. And they submitted the annual report. Capital projects this year, they had a couple of big projects. We had the security upgrades for the schools. That's about 98% complete. We had some paving improvements, that's about 60% complete, you know. And then we had some security around the Town Hall and the Police Department, that's about 95% complete. And then there's, you know, a gamut of other projects, you know, it's ongoing, ongoing, ongoing. This has been like a really slow, it seemed like there's so much construction that these projects are really being pushed off. So, you know, we had started a roofing project back in, we went out to bid out in May, we started in July, and we're still finishing up the roof. So it's just that everyone's just swamped right now at work. So everybody's trying to squeeze everybody in, so everything should be done before the winter. Staffing update, we're doing really good, you know. We, this year, we were nice enough to get a licensed skilled craftsman. We went out to bid two times so far, so we finally, we went back a third time, and we have two candidates. So I'm hoping by the end of the week to make a decision on the two candidates. They both have unbelievable backgrounds. One's heavy, it's a carpentry construction, the other one is all masonry. I could probably use both, unfortunately, I can only pick one. I mean, that's gonna be really challenging. They're both very skilled people, but, you know, very different skills, that's what I mean. But that's good. But the economy's just so good, you have a hard time trying to find anyone right now. And obviously, the Department right now, we're still supporting 37.5 full-time employees, or 12 seasonal helpers in the summertime. This year, we relocated from, my office was right down the hall, we moved out to DPW, so that was done over the middle of summer. And it's, you know, it's, you know, obviously, challenges with moving. It's my fifth move now since I've been in town, so you're kinda used to it, but it's moving's tough, but, you know, but you pack your stuff up and you kinda purge, and, you know, so it's, we're almost there. I mean, it has its pros and cons. I mean, I like to, it's nice to do all my quiet work, but trying to get around town is sometimes tough. The traffic down there is tough. Trying to get out of the DPW yet.
There is.
Where are you in the new building out back? Are you in the new?
In the Gilbane.
In the Gilbane, the operations building, yeah.
But it's tough. The traffic is just unbelievable, you know. So if you have an emergency, like 8:30 in the morning, it's tough to, but I have to take, I have to take the right, you know. You can't go left.
To get out of there, yeah.
Yeah, it's a tough situation. You know, the Green Communities update, obviously, we just, we added, you know, the six or seven projects. We just finished one. We're starting all the other projects in the next two weeks. That's, you know, Town Hall, Police Department, and that's all lighting projects. So we have to work on our people, but, you know, even the Green Communities, they're all backed up. There's just so much work, and everyone's just backed up. So last year at this time, I had pretty much all my projects done. This year, I'm just starting the projects. So that's how, economy's just so good, and, you know, it's just so hard trying to find the contractors to do the work. Our work order system, we're pretty good. We just, you know, we're about 9,000 work orders since we started this Department, but because we're very busy, we're about 200, 200 work orders backlog. I'm hoping this new Craftsman Carpenter will really kinda help out once we get that person in place, but there's a lot of work orders that we're pushing off. I'm also on the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee, so we, I think we're making some pretty good progress there. We have an architect, we have, you know, we've gone through two or three rounds of plans, so hopefully shortly, we will have a final set of drawings to maybe just bring to the Board. But that's been an interesting process, but it's definitely a building that's truly needed in town, I mean, the animal shelter, so.
How are you budget-wise on that one? How was it?
Well, it's, you know, I guess there's some funding that, I mean, there's some funding, you know, that's been generated, you know, two donations, and the other one is, you know, is privately funded. But I'm hoping within two weeks, we'll have a cost analysis of what it's, you know, we're roughly about 5,000 square feet of space, so we'll get some really good hard numbers. But construction costs right now are just through the roof, through the roof right now. Yeah. So it's gonna be interesting. But we really need the master plan to kinda go forward, to do more fundraising. Obviously, you know, we talked about, you know, Mike mentioned earlier about, you know, buying soft, so we're starting, just starting to meet with the DPW, talk about winter conditions and getting kind of ramped up. So I'm keeping my fingers crossed we have another mild winter. We'll see what happens, you know. Never been wet once, so. And then all the rest are just pretty much all projects that are, you know, ongoing, completed, that we've done in-house. You know, there's many of them. I, you know, all this, all of them. You know, so then, let me see, and then the back page is all projects that really need to get done. I'm hoping to get a lot of these projects done over the next two years, but I just, I have a rolling account of things I'd like to see done. It's like new, you know, new vital treads in the stairs, new VCT, new ceilings, it's just like ongoing things that have been put out for a while. So we're, you know, we're slowly trying to get to them. And then, you know, then lastly, we just, we just did another three-year cleaning contract for this building, Town Hall, Senior Center, and the library. And I helped out with the DPW this year, trying to get them a small contract for their new operations building. They didn't have any contract cleaners down there, so I had some money left in the budget and Chase, the DPW director, and I, I kinda funding both of that so we can get, you know, a cleaning crew in there at least twice a week for the guys and the ladies, you know, that use that, you know. So it was being cleaned in-house. It's just, you really need to hire somebody to do it, but they do it on a schedule, they do it for two hours, and they're professional cleaners. So they're really happy to have that building kinda cleaned up. You know, I'd like to thank my landscapers, you know, Drisco Landscaping, the Amsterdam Guide, and Clug, Towntree, Malloy Landscaper, and Colta, and Eagle Farms, all their continued support, their help out here. And Officer Johnny Drisco, you know, does the greens here and the library, so without them, it'd be another burden on the Department trying to.
They certainly do give an awful lot.
They do an awful lot.
And they don't ask for a lot of, you know, notoriety in return.
Yeah, they're all the quiet heroes. They just come in and do it, and they show up at 6:00 in the morning, they cut the grass, weed it, fertilize it, it's unbelievable. The grounds, the grounds are beautiful. So that's pretty much, you know, a whole bunch. If you have any questions, I mean, just, you know, a busy time of year.
Bill, other than the, you know, the economy obviously being a challenge, what other challenges do you see, you know, forthcoming? And do you think having that skilled labor is gonna be helpful for you?
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, it's, you know, I always try to explain to people that you hire somebody with that skill set. It's good and bad. They're not gonna do capital, all the capital projects, but they're gonna do all the small ones that could become capital projects, and that's why we try to look at like a good PM program. Quicker that we can, you know, change the fascia on a gutter system, it's not gonna be a rotted gutter and a rotted fascia becomes a major project. So we can bang out some of those projects. And just, you know, aesthetically, you know, doing stairs and, you know, putting doors and windows in. Our biggest challenge is, you know, even the big challenge with the schools with the hardware, is doors. There's a thousand doors, and they're always, you know, when you have to sub that type of work out, you have to wait for it, first of all, for somebody to show up, so we can kinda get those, you know, and legally, the doors have to close for fire, so, but that's an enormous challenge, is the hardware. You know, but it's, you know, you have, you know, 4,000 schools, students, the doors are closing all day long, there's a lot of wear and tear on doors. You know, and then the really big things, I'm on the capital community, just, you know, trying to fund all these major projects. We have a lot sitting out there. We have, you know, proposed for a DPW facility, new firehouses, you know, it's gonna be a challenge. I mean, it's gonna, it's, you know.
You love it.
Huh?
You love it.
You know, I like, you know, I mean, I feel, I feel real comfortable in the trailer trying to build something, trying to play it fast, tough watch, you mean, but, you mean, but that's gonna be the challenge for the town, you're just trying to, but, you know, I'm actually working very close with the DPW director and looking, maybe looking at that $25 million plan down there that we can maybe find another way of doing it. You mean, maybe over a 15-year plan, maybe just, you know, build a billion at a time, so it's not enormous.
You already own the property, so it's, you have an existing footprint, so, yeah, that would.
So we can, yeah, maybe cut that project in half. That would be huge, I mean, you know, because everybody has a different viewpoint on how a DPW, or campus style, or building, but, you know, but something needs to be done down there, clearly. I mean, it's just that, I think the firehouse is gonna be, it's, it's, yeah, it's tough, 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 though.
No question. Yeah, they both do need, need the support.
You guys do a great job. You know that, I think that. I mean, I just, you've been an asset since you got here. You know, not just are they skilled, but they come, you know, they're just, they're attentive to detail, the way that they work cooperatively. I just, I've been a big fan, when I worked across the street, I remain a big fan now, and you know that.
Yeah, no, we have a good.
It's not easy, but you've really taken, people don't realize, you know, they think, they see the individual departments of buildings, they don't see how you have to look at it in a big picture, that there's so many moving pieces that we own, so much infrastructure that is constantly dealing with pressure of age and winters and salt and snow, and we saw just one bed went to the 110 inch, what that did to our fleet of equipment, to the buildings, everything here, so. I think you're doing a good job.
You know, we have a great Department. I'm one of the good people that work for me, and, you know, we have a good team, and we all work together, and we get to train our skills, and, you know, and they have a great attitude, you mean, so, I mean, they all seem to enjoy what they do, which is really important, when you have a team that wants to work, and wants to do it, it's a good failing, I mean, so.
We appreciate it, Bill. I think there's no question, as Richard said, at the end of the day, you're saving us money, you know, by working together as a team and being as efficient as you are and doing the little things that make it really a big deal. So we appreciate that.
Good luck with your decision on those two employee, potential employees. Sounds like you have a hard choice.
Yeah, but, but that's good, because it took almost three months to even get to this point, because it was a hard time trying to find anyone, you mean, economy's so good, but we finally have two people, and I'm really excited, you mean.
Well, thanks again, Bill, for coming in. We appreciate your update.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Everything, Bill. A couple of small points as Bill gets up. It's just that there's been a move going on here. Bill had a vision to move some operations people back down to Randolph Ave., which I appreciate, but in the middle of that, we're asking him to drop everything and help us with the front hall for Veterans Services, Veterans Day, and what's going on down there for Kevin Cook's Veterans Day event. So thank you for that. They're always pulled in many different directions, but always respond, and I appreciate all the work, Bill. Thank you.
It's all fun at the end of the day.
Thanks, Mark, again.
Good night, Bill.
That's a great segue to our next agenda item. We have Kevin Cook, our Veterans Agent, here to have a discussion about Veterans Day. Good evening, Kevin.
I was gonna thank Walt.
You can still thank him.
Yes, so, yeah, Consolidated Services has given us a great hand to get the front hallway ready for our new event that's coming up for Veterans Day, and the dedication of a POW MIA chair here in Milton. Recently, Ken Burns' Vietnam War series has really drawn a lot of attention to the Vietnam War, and it's kinda fitting, because of course, they didn't get the proper welcome home. And this is our way of, as a community, I think, of really cementing how we feel about the Vietnam era and the Vietnam, and those who didn't come home. One of the parts of the ceremony we will highlight is there are still 39 people from Massachusetts who are unaccounted for in the Vietnam War, and we'll read their names as part of the ceremony so that they are remembered. And that's the key, is having a chair like that in the front hall. Everyone who comes to Town Hall will now see it and remember and look and stop and think about it, and there'll always be an open seat waiting for the return of our POW MIAs.
That's great. Absolutely fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah, a lot of planning been going on, just a lot of effort. Mike's been very supportive. Him and I took a ride down to Randolph, because we did one there last year, and he was, you know, duly impressed with the effort that Randolph made for Maureen Dunn, and one of the founders of the POW MIA movement, and we kinda used it as a blueprint, because, I mean, they did a smash-up job. We've purchased a chair, it's gonna be handmade. There's a manufacturer down in Pennsylvania, they do the kinda university-style chairs that you see with the symbol on top, so we're gonna have that ready to go. We've got a little riser for it, and then a plaque, they'll sit right behind, well, the large plaque is right now, they'll be right next to it, and then we're gonna move the flags over on either side, so it'll be, it'll be very dignified, and it'll be a nice, dignified place for everyone to just kinda stop and for a minute and look and think about it when they come in. Barbara Martin in the Selectment Office has been giving me incredible support. She's the, she's the details person. I'm kinda like the vision person out there in front, running with the ideas, and she's making sure all the little pieces fall into place, so Barbara's efforts, it wouldn't be impossible for me to do without her. She's a great partner on all these things, one of the young, single heroes in Milton, I think. Of course, right now, she's got a lot of other things going on, so, you know, we're trying to work those out. As always, I wanna get the kids and the students involved, and I'm meeting actually tomorrow with Principal Spalding, Dr. Spalding, at the middle school. We have an initiative with the kids called My Veteran, actually hashtag My Veteran, I have to say. Trying to get that kids involved in this. And what it is, we read it real simple this year, we said, just, you know, give us a piece on what, who's your veteran in your life? And it could be a grandfather, it could be father, mother, sister, brother, and they can just post a piece about it on our, the Veterans Services page. And then we're gonna have a couple of these kids come to a breakfast that we're holding on Veterans Day, and we'll feature them as part of the breakfast. We are organizing a breakfast at the COA, creation of a needy veterans' fund here, previously discussed with the Board, that we'll have available, and we're hoping to, you know, use this as a kickoff. There's a number of Milton residents who've come to me over the last year and a half or so and said, you know, how could I help? How could I help? And this'll be a great way, because if they want to, they can donate to this fund. It'll be a continuous fund that's managed by a 501(c)(3), and this way, there's a veteran in need, truly in need, and there are veterans in our community who, you know, like everyone else, the economy's squeezing, you know, housing or any number of things, they can come to me and say, hey, you know, I need help. And we have an immediate source of, you know, provide them a small sum that they might need. And, you know, and this happens all the time to BSOs, you know, they come to us and say, you know, the car broke down, you know, our budget's stretched. I had a veteran in my office the other day who's, his wife got sick, she was out of work for a number of weeks, they fell behind on the rent, so, you know, he said, I'm not here for anything other than to put some groceries back on the cover, you know. So, I mean, that's, and those are the tough realities we see every day. So this'll be a great fund that we'll be able to have here in Milton. We'll make sure that the veterans are aware of it. There's a number of volunteers, this breakfast is gonna be, of course, put on by volunteers. We put a piece out to the high schools, because the kids all have community service obligation that they have for part of their graduation, so we like to get the kids involved on that level, too. And the Blue Hills Regional School, and we've had the entire hockey team volunteer as a group.
That's terrific.
Yeah. So that's like 15, 20 kids, and we're gonna try to split them into two squads, because there's another breakfast coming on down at Randolph the same morning, of course, so I'm gonna try to split them into two squads, and because Randolph and Milton both are part of the regional school family, and I think it's a great thing for the kids to come out and see what's going on in the community. So that's part of the ceremony. The ceremony will be pretty much the normal schedule. There's a meetup around 10:30 at the high school, I guess the band forms up and all the different color guards and units, and then everyone kinda marches down. We've had two groups who are gonna come and help us. We've had a Promise from Rolling Thunder, Chapter 1, out of Boston, and they're big in the POW MIA movement, so they'll be here to help us, this is with the dedication to the chair. So we might have a number of motorcyclists coming, and then we've got the Crusaders, Pipe and Drum Crew.
Pipe and Drum.
Pipe and Drum, excuse me. And we've got a, I talked to one of the key people in their organization, they've got a big show coming on later in the month, and they said, we could use this as a nice little tune-up. So they're gonna have about 10, 5, 10 people show up and kinda just join in on the parade, because of course, the kids from Milton High do a great job, and they've got a, the chorus is gonna be involved in this, so, but I wanna kinda give both groups an opportunity to be part of our, our day, and we did this with the POW MIA chair down in Randolph, and that distinct sound of the fifes and drums, it just, it brings a lot of emotion to the ceremony, so.
I have a couple of questions. I don't wanna interrupt, if you have a.
Oh, no, no.
All right. So the chair dedication's taking part during the Veterans Day ceremony out here on the gazebo, and then we're gonna, is part of it then gonna move inside to dedicate the chair in the lobby?
The way we're gonna do this, and this is, and this is weather permitting, of course, and that's a way different Sunday, November, right? But here we are in October. What we will do is we will set up here on the Town Hall steps for the chair. The chair will be outside, we'll have a plaque on a small tripod stand-up outside. We can't get everyone into the front hall, and this is kinda the way we did it down at Randolph. There'll be a number of things going on, the gazebo, the raising of the flag, and things like that, but the main ceremony will take place here on the front driveway with the chair, right off to the side. And then once we've done the dedication and the ceremony completes, we ask everyone to give us like three, four minutes, and we break everything inside, set it up, and then allow people to come in and see it in place.
Okay, so it'll be a little different setup than in prior years?
Yeah, I just, I mean, we'll still be.
This is weather permitting. This is, if it's a good day.
Weather permitting, hey, October, I got up this morning, it was 68 degrees, I'm loving this.
Kevin, I just wanna get back on the breakfast and the 501(c)(3).
Sure.
When we met a few months ago, we, we had, you happened to have Diane Ferrari in that same night, and there was some talk about, should it really be funneled through the Milton Residents Fund or a separate 501(c)(3) that I think you told us, and correct me if I'm wrong, that it, there's one setup in Randolph, and you were gonna try to wind Milton into that, maybe with subaccounts.
Two separate accounts, basically.
Two separate accounts.
Yeah, managed separately. Basically, there's the Friends of the Senior Center, and they have a 501(c)(3).
And that's for the Randolph Senior Center?
Yeah, they hold Randolph's needy veterans fund, and they said they have no problem with establishing a second, separate account that would exclusively be for Milton Residents, because I'm the one who actually asks and requests the funds, and I'm going to be the one bringing donations to them.
So, okay, so is, that's been discussed with the appropriate person in Randolph?
Yes.
And they're on board with?
Yes.
Reporting this, okay.
Right.
Are we sure that, you know, that we're comfortable that all the paperwork is done and all the, we want to be sure that anyone who gives a donation.
I can provide monthly reports.
Is going to be able to make sure that it's in a 501(c)(3) for their own tax purposes?
Yeah.
But we want to be sure we can track the funds for, separate them between Milton and Randolph.
Right.
Only because, you know, Randolph's is already well-established, it seems, and this is going to get started, and I'm sure they would have the same concerns that we would.
Yeah, I can provide monthly reports, because each month I get a consolidation report that tells me what's in the account, anything we've spent out of the account, so I can provide those to anybody who needs it, if Mike's office or selectman would like a copy.
Yeah, I mean, I just know setting up a 501(c)(3), there's a lot of hoops you have to jump through, so I, I want to be sure we're okay, we've got everything, all the Ts crossed and the Is dotted, and getting that set up for Milton.
I just want to follow up to your question, so we're going to share the same 501(c)(3) that Randolph already has established, I think?
That's what it sounds like, that's why I'm asking.
Otherwise, there's no way this could have been done in fast enough.
Yeah, they're going to be the administrator of the account, so the checks and balances is I have to go to somebody else. I can't just write a check out of it, I can't just take money out of this account. I have to request that, and usually sit down and discuss with the person who's in charge of the account. And there's two ladies down there, Joanne Coleman and Brenda, who actually keep track of the account, and they issue the funds. So, I would sit down with them, and they'd say, okay, can you tell me what you need? And I would bring the basic surmise of what, you know, veteran so-and-so came to me, here's a copy of the bill from Midas, they need a 249 for a muffler on the car, you know, here's his recent bank statement, you know? I do all the due diligence before I go forward to even request a check.
Yeah, I mean, I'm comfortable leading up to Kevin to work it out with the town administrator bar, make sure we get all the paperwork done, I just want to be sure it's.
Sure. Yeah, no, everything will be all the board and transparent, because that's the only way it can be.
And so, the breakfast is going to start at what time?
Breakfast will kick off at 8:30. It'll commence until right around 10:30. We hope to have multiple settings, because we know that's a smaller area, and some people might want to come a little bit later, some come a little early. And then, basically, the volunteers should be starting to clean up around 10:15, and be done 10:30, 10:45 at, so they can join the ceremonies also. We did this similar down in Randolph at Memorial Day, it went over real big, we had a hundred and sixty people come in for breakfast. Tickets will be seven dollars, and they will be available at the door, so.
And it's open to the public?
Open to the public, yes, please, please come in and have breakfast. It's a great thing, the facility there at the COA is just incredible, I mean, the kitchen is set up perfectly for this type of thing. Mary Ann and her group have done a number of dinners and breakfasts through there, so it's, it's really nice to see, in fact, I have a breakfast, the monthly breakfast, I'm the speaker on the 26th for there, at like nine o'clock, so I'll be there, and I'm looking forward to it, so.
Thank you.
Yep. Well, we're looking forward to it, and thanks again for integrating the students, I think that that's a, it's a big deal, you know?
Oh, yeah.
To educate them and to get them as a part of this whole process, like you have in the past, and I think it goes, it goes miles, you know, especially within the school department, so.
Well, I was, I was blown away last year by our art winner, the young little twelve-year-old, eleven-year-old sixth grader who designed the winning poster, I mean, she just knocked me over.
Right.
And that's what I think we need to do, we need to make sure the kids are always part of these things, because they're the future of Milton, and we never want them to forget that, you know, you see that gentleman around town who's moving kind of slowly, you see him at the CBS, and, you know, he's the guy who was out there at the tip of the spear, you know, fifty, sixty years ago, and they want to know what he did, you know, and who he was.
That's right.
And the ladies, of course, now, female veterans now are becoming such a large part of the Milton community with Iraqi Freedom and Afghanistan.
Well, it means a lot to us, and we appreciate your, your service and your help, and want to thank again Barbara Martin for the organization part of this, because without her, we'd be, we'd be up the creek, I'm sure.
She's an amazing, amazing person, and she just keeps it all together, you know, because I'm trying to focus on certain things, and then she's right there to kind of compliment me. And Mike's support, you know, he's been great, I can't say enough about Mike's support as town administrator for the Veterans Office. Anything I need, I just, I can talk to him, and, you know, we'll figure it out one way or the other.
All right, well, thanks for coming in, Kevin.
No, my pleasure.
Appreciate it. Look forward to more follow-up.
We'll see everybody on the 11th.
Thanks so much.
Thanks, Kevin. It's a Saturday.
Yes, it is.
Yep.
Yeah, it's going to be kind of a big one, because, I mean, up at the State House, there's going to be a large ceremony and a number of other things, so, but we'll put Milton's first.
Great, thanks again.
Thanks, Kevin.
So, we're going to skip ahead to item number eight, we've got pretty much everybody in here in the room now for a conference with attorney Ned Corcoran on a presentation related to 475 Adam Street. Good evening, Ned.
Good evening, chairman, members of the board.
Good evening.
Hey, Stephen, how are you?
Good. Thank you for having us. I'm here with Stephen Conley, who is Father Jerry, one of the principals in 131 Elliott Street LLC, which is the owner of the property at 475 Adam Street in Milton. I have a very brief PowerPoint to give sort of an overview of the property in the area and the plan going forward, so, and I don't have a, you got it, all right. So, do you have a laser? I don't. I know. So, the property is shown up there, it fronts on, it's a triangular-shaped lot that fronts on Adam Street, bounded on the easterly side, the right-hand side, by Robert Jubenville's office, on the left-hand side by the Church of Our Savior. And in the rear, there is a small, tight neighborhood. Across the street is the Blue Hill Bank Building, and to the left, heading west, is St. Agatha. It's an interesting property, the property historically was a doctor office, it was originally Dr. McAuliffe's office, then more recently it was Dr. Driscoll, and that use lapsed about five or six years ago. Property was purchased by the O'Neills, they sought to change it into a real estate office, there was some concern about that, and they let that, withdrew that petition, and then lapsed that effort, and ultimately sold to the Conleys. And so, it is a property that although is located as a residential site, it is residency zone, it is a stretch of Adam Street that's historically been really commercial use. If you go all the way down to Squanton, further to the west where that other office building is, that is formerly a motor vehicle dealership and a gas station that was converted to office by means of a variance. The Blue Hill Bank Building exists by means of a variance, the Jubenville Building exists by means of a variance. The post office is actually in the business zone, it's on the edge of the business zone, and the business zone comes southerly along the expressway, if you will, and encompasses the gas station and the Jack Rabbit Building and the, the office building at Three Boulevard. But, and either side of the expressway, the business zone extends a hundred feet, and then there are many properties that are, that are sort of half-in and half-out, if you will. Dolan Funeral Home, for example, is half in the business zone and half in the residence zone, and requires a variance as part of its existence. So, next slide, if you would. This is currently there, it is a, it is an old red building, it has been, it is pre-1919, it's been deemed to be historic, I know that the Historic Commission was very keen at efforts to try and save the building. It fell into significant disrepair before the Conleys purchased it, they've taken a hard look at it, and they're really not able to, to save it and to reuse any portion of the structure. We did go before the Historical Commission, as part of the demolition delay process occurred a year and a half ago, last February, they voted to issue a delay, we've gotten well beyond that, the term of the delay, and really can't do much with it. So, next, there it is looking sort of easterly on Adam Street, next. And this is a rendering of what the building might look like, it's intended to fit with the Jubenville Building, as you can see to the left of that slide. Now, I think the scale of that rendering is out of, really out of scale with the actual size of the building. The intent of the building is to build two 1,000-square-foot offices on the first floor and two two-bedroom apartments on the second floor. It is a mixed use, which is not allowed in either the business zone or the residence zone. And so, before the Board of Appeals for variance to allow that mixed use, there's also a need to vary the front yard setback in the business, if it were in the business zone, there's no front yard setback, you set right in the back of sidewalk. But in the residence zone, you have to go back 20 feet. What that does is it pushes the building well back towards the neighborhood, and you want to pull the building to the street to avoid that. So, there is a, we are seeking a six-foot variance, you can see that front overhang of the front door, the edge of that is six feet off of the back of the sidewalk. In a meeting with the planning board a couple of weeks ago, we, at their suggestion, have redesigned that front look to widen it, give it sort of a front porch look, and sort of span that nose, if you will, and break up the massing along Adam Street. And so, the rendering hasn't caught up with, with that meeting, but the plan is to sort of widen that and give it, and coming from the left-hand side of that building would be a sidewalk with a ramp to come from the front door. Next. So, there's the Jubenville Building, you can see the scale of the building, that's a much, it's a larger building, there's a couple of offices, a couple of apartments in there. It's the same use, it's the same scale of use, it's a very quiet office-type of use. I mean, I can't remember the last time I saw a car enter or exit from the Jubenville Building, and I'm at the site for 475 Adam Street fairly often, and I think it's a quiet use. Adam Street is a busy street, it's got that commercial sort of feel to it. The alternative under zoning, to put a single-family, full single-family house, or break that lot into two and put two single-family houses would be, I think, an inappropriate alternative use, with, now you're introducing lots of in-and-out with parents and children. I think two apartments upstairs for young, with young couples, probably not with children, would make a, would be more appropriate in terms of the type of, you know, who would live there, walking to the square, walking to the bus, and whatnot. Next. And that's looking sort of, again, east with the, with the Blue Hill Bank Building on the left. Next. Here we are again, and then one more. And this is the, a revised site plan, we revised the site plan in two ways after meeting with the planning board two weeks ago. So, the building, so the lot itself is triangular, it's slightly more than 15,000 square feet. There's a, there was a, formerly a strip about 20 feet wide on the left-hand side that was severed off of the property. Bob Jubenville actually bought the property several years ago, thinking that he might expand or take over this property and sort of adjust it, and either expand or do something else with it. Ultimately, he divided the lot, he took about a 20-foot-wide swath heading all the way to the back to provide some additional area for parking and buffering from his parking. And what was left is a 15,250 approximately square foot lot. It is in a residency zone, it's got more than, it's got about 300 or 400 feet of frontage. So, it is divisible under a simple subdivision plan without any approval, two, two lots, that would be 7,500 square feet, each worth 100, with 75 feet of frontage. But it would be an odd-shaped combination of lots. Where do you put driveways and how do you make driveways work coming in and out would be difficult if you were thinking about it, again, from a straight residential perspective. What we've done is, we were originally planning to apply for three variances. The first is the use variance, allow a mix of uses and the commercial use within the business zone. Second is this front yard setback of six feet. The third dealt with parking. And the parking, when we originally designed the parking, parking lot was designed to be more generous in terms of the size of parking spaces and the width of driveways between spaces than what's required under zoning. So, it looked like we needed a variance from the rear setback, excuse me, the right-side setback, as we determined, of 10 feet. A parking lot having more than five parking spaces needs to be at least 10 feet off of a side lot line. When we were at the planning board two weeks ago, that, the question came up, in part, could we adjust the building, turn the building on its side and narrow the look that you get from Adam Street itself? That had a lot of concern from the neighbors in the rear, because it pushes, you turn it, and that building now, really, you need a side yard setback, a rear yard setback, a front yard setback, now where do you put your parking? And they were concerned that everything would be moving back towards them. We discovered in the process that the parking lot could be redesigned to take away the need for variance, simply by shrinking the parking spaces themselves from 19 feet in length to 18. Two rows of parking is two feet, and you had a 25 feet between the parking spaces themselves and the zoning by the 22. All of a sudden, we had, we took away five feet. That made the parking lot conforming from a zoning perspective, that eased the concerns of the abutters, who wanted everything to come further away. There is an interest, there's quite a gray change between the front entrance and the rear lot line, it's about four feet, it really sort of comes up, and you don't realize it until you're standing on the sidewalk, and then you kind of walk up the existing driveway.
My brother and I used to shovel it when we were kids. As soon as you start it, I'm like, oh, it's, it goes up.
And so, the notion would be that, as we come in around that building, we would lower the, that level of pavement and build up a nice retaining wall behind it with some shrubs on it. The neighbors have already planted, installed a nice fence, they've had conversations about plantings that would be supplementing on either side of the fence, it's been a very good working relationship, particularly between the Stocks, who own the two family that's behind it, they and Mrs. Stocks' parents, and the Conleys have spoken at length about that. So, there was concern, when we started this about a year and a half ago, we had some neighbor meetings, I have two meetings at the Milton, East Milton Library, the Art Center, a lot of concern at the time about how much traffic might be generated from this use. There was, it was also coming right at the time when the Blue Hills Bank Building was being finished, and there was a lot of concern about what happened there, and how did that happen, how was that allowed to happen without any real process? Historically, there's an old variance in that, for that property, and allows a bank, and they didn't need to go amend any permissions, they needed site plan approval, but that's not a permission, that's simply an overview by the planning board as to how the site would be developed, how do you enter and exit, where's your parking, things like that. So, I think there was concern at the time, I'm not, you know, not everybody's completely happy that this is going to get redeveloped with some commercial, but it, but the variance clearly asked for two offices, no retail, so that you don't get that churn of a retail. And I think that the likely tenants are, you know, the small lawyer group, the small accounting group, where you have a little bit of come and go with your clients, but for the most part, you're there, and you're, you're there for a few hours, you might have to go off and have lunch, or a meeting, you know, similar to the way my practice is, is, you know, I have an office about as big as this room, and I go to my clients, I think that's the way a lot, particularly in smaller offices, work, so. That's the plan, I think there's one more slide, it's sort of, sort of the program, again, explains it, two-story mixed-use building, matching the look of the building next door, 2,000-square-foot offices with two small two-bedroom apartments. We thought about applying for a zoning to reduce the number of parking spaces, you would require eight for the two offices, plus one each for the residential units, that's 10. It's unlikely that there'll be 10 cars there, particularly because the office and the residential will churn night to day, but we just thought that would be one less thing. If we, if we had room to do it, we'd just do it, and then adjust, we can adjust later. And then, so fencing and arbivotes will be planted along the rear, and then I think the last one is just sort of what's next. So, we were, September 28th, we had a preliminary hearing on site plan approval, we're here before you tonight, Thursday, we're before the Board of Appeals here on a variance application. Fog goes well, we'll be back before the planning board to close on site plan approval, they still have some, some minor comments that they would, some comments that they have about, you know, making sure that what gets planted along the rear is appropriate, that there's a plan for removing, replacing trees, if trees are affected during construction, things like that, they're not specific to the variance, but ultimately would be important for their, for their concern for the neighborhood, so. Here we are. Any questions?
No, go ahead, Richard.
No, no.
I don't have any real questions, I, I saw designs with this a long time ago, and I did watch the planning board meeting, it sounds like you've addressed some of the concerns from the abutters and the planning board, or you're still in the process of addressing them for the planning board. I, I like to design myself.
I do like that it looks so similar to Jubenville's office, and they were both doctors' offices at one point. I think Jubenville was Dr. O'Connor, and the red building was, was it Dr. Gal, they were both doctors' offices at one point.
The dentist, right?
He was a dentist, yeah, and.
That's what he was.
But it is kind of, it almost looks, it blends into the historic look of Hollis Square, so I, I do like that. I do like that there's no excess or egress into Hollis, so if traffic goes in on Adam Street, I'm happy with that.
Well, I, like Katie and Richard, I appreciate that you guys have taken the time to meet with the neighbors and with their concerns, because I think that's first and foremost all the time, and, and that you tried to, to save the historical value of the building, but obviously you couldn't, and, and you've done your best to have it fit, you know, kind of, you know, the area, which is, which is very important, so. I don't have any further questions, if nobody else does want to think.
Speaking of the historical value, I know, I did, I know Steve O'Donnell, the chair of the Historical Commission, was asking if you could save that front porch on the red building, and that, that did come up at the East Milton Association meeting. But it sounds like you're, you're not saving that one, but you're, you're kind of making an effort to have a porch look at the site. We haven't, it's not shown in this plan, but.
Doesn't show on this one, but the last planning board meeting, you guys did talk about that.
That sounds like it's a nice approach to try to compromise a little bit, so.
He spoke to that point at the last, at the planning board meeting, and there was some, some thought given, you know, Cheryl, to Guy, as in particular, as an architect, gave some thought to redefining the front presence, that it really does change, you know, if you're coming across from East Milton on the Wood Street Extension, and as you get to that split, you can go right or left, there's the building right in front of you across the street. And right now, it's a long building, it goes almost to the rear lot line, and, but what you face is what used to be the front, it's sort of a side view, but it used to be the front door view.
Right.
And by turning that, you're now really changing the, the presence of what you're going to look at. So, I think the idea of providing some better articulation, breaking up that long plane, it's about 70 feet long, so with a nice, instead of just that front nose, with a much wider porch entry, and it actually makes it sort of an easier way for a handicap accessible to come in from the parking lot, and it gives them a much wider area to land and enter for accident bad weather, particularly if you can get in easier to get in and out of a building from the front door.
If the schools are right, what's your timeline to start?
Springtime.
Yeah, springtime's from. And how long do you think, how long do you think the construction will be?
Yeah, we, yeah, we do, we do have some people here from, from the area, and I'd like to give them an opportunity to maybe.
Sure.
You know, now that you're done with your presentation, to, if they'd like to speak, I'm not sure, would anybody here in attendance like to comment on?
I'll ask a question.
Project.
Do you have any questions at all about this project?
No, because we live across the street from it, that's the only thing. And if more, more of the zoning we're concerned, and that isn't being taken up tonight anyway.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you again.
Thank you, and thank you for coming.
Appreciate you all for coming in tonight to listen to the, to the project. Thank you, Steve, thank you, Ned.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, good luck.
Thanks.
Good luck. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to skip back now to item number seven, a conference, a municipal broadband network from Milton. We have Mike Zulis and Joe Chamberlain coming in to have a preliminary discussion regarding an overview of logistics of a municipal broadband network. Hi, Joe. Hi, Michael, how are you guys?
Good evening.
Good evening. So we appreciate you guys coming in and taking the time to, we have a presentation here that...
Look at that, huh?
Yeah, just like that. Chairman Burns, thank you. Secretary Conlon, member Wells. My name is Mike Zulis from 69 Fairbanks Road. I'm a precinct three-town meeting member. With me is Joe Chamberlain from 131 Clap Street, yes, 131 Clap Street. And we tonight are representing ourselves and our neighbors who are interested in higher cost and less expensive internet here in Milton. In short, we think there are opportunities or can be explored for better, faster, cheaper internet here in Milton. If you go to the next slide, or actually the third slide, we have self-described ourselves as the Milton Municipal Broadband Initiative. We're interested in bringing together residents and town government and businesses and nonprofits to explore the possibility of improving and updating our internet here in Milton. We think there are opportunities for lower costs, improved speed and capacity, improved service, along with improved capability and net neutrality. So that's the overview of what we'd like to explore. And to fill in a little of the details is really the brains behind this, and that's Joe Chamberlain. So Joe, if you want to take over.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you for having us. It's the first time I've met you guys, so it's very exciting. So thank you again. So I'm going to start with our current, the status quo. So the status quo today is we have Comcast. Comcast is the overwhelming, dominant internet service provider in Milton. We do have RCN in town, but I don't even know if that rises to the level of duopoly. So I mean, personally, I would think of it as a monopoly here in Milton with Comcast. Now Comcast, excuse me, with their market power, are essentially able to charge whatever they want. So we have high prices. We have, along with the high prices, we have the dubious distinction of not great service as well. You know, two hallmarks of a monopoly, really, almost textbook. And the, and I probably shouldn't have led with this, but it's the limited choice. So, you know, as, as the town as a customer, as well as subscribers, retail, you know, us as citizens, we essentially have no choice, which leads to the high prices and subpar service, subpar quality. And turning the page, from the town's point of view, I'm going to kind of look at it in two different ways here. So the town has the institutional network, which is a wholly owned system of Comcast. The town relies on this system, obviously, connects all the public buildings. I'm not going to sit here and pretend to be an expert about it, but just knowing conceptually what it does, hooking up the schools, the town hall, the library, and I'm probably missing some other things. And it is a vital communications network for, for the town. Right now, I believe that Comcast does not charge us for that. I know that we're beginning negotiations with it, with the, with Comcast as the, as the contract is going to set to expire a year from now. Anecdotally, through my research, I have come across a few different stories from a few different, very disparate places of the second contract, from Comcast being the one where they'll start charging. That's not a prediction, it's, you know, just anecdotally, you know, that's, that's something that's, something on my mind anyway, as far as the, the town's institutional network. I won't sit here and speak to kind of the first responder aspect of the institutional network, because I don't know the details of that. But knowing that we don't have a, you know, another alternative, I'm kind of assuming here that the first responder network is also reliant on...
It is.
On the...
It is.
On the Comcast network. And, you know, Comcast owns this network. So they, you know, essentially can do with it what they want. I mean, sure, we're customers, and we disturb the customers and stuff like that, but because of the ownership aspect, the town with its institutional network is rather limited with what it can, with what it can do in the future, with what the whole, with what the internet promises. So one reason that's, that this slide is meant to convey is, is the, the, the limited, the limited ability that the town has in order to innovate or just improve, really. I mean, it goes, it's, it goes beyond just the promise of the future, it's just even just making it better. So that's the institutional network. I'm turning the page here, and going to zero in on the subscriber network, which is the retail network, where we as residents, you know, we have, we have subscriptions and we get our cable TV over the subscriber network. And over that same network, we get our internet. Now, since Comcast has been in the town since, I think it was 2002, before that it was Media One, and who Comcast gobbled up, which is what they're wanting to do. And as a, and I'm speaking personally here, I'm not an economist, I didn't do this research, but I'm kind of speaking personally as a subscriber, a longtime subscriber, all I've seen is prices go up for essentially the same service. And, you know, it's, it's frustrating to say the least, as a, as a private citizen, to continue to see this, or to look back and to see that that's been my experience, and then to look in the future with the promise of the internet and what it brings, and just seeing, you know, for myself, 20, 30, 40 years of Comcast in front of me. It's a little depressing. It's, the technology is, it's called coaxial copper wire. It's limited in the sense that it's relative to fiber optic, which is the, kind of the state-of-the-art internet technology, cable technology. It's, as a technology, it's basically slow, it's not high capacity, and I don't know about anybody at this table, but I often suffer from outages in my, in my house. So it's not great quality either. Sorry, that was the old technology page. It literally is 19th century technology. I mean, it was invented, this coaxial, in the 1880s. Now, we put this in here because of the idea of what's coming down the pike. And I have a, I have a slide later on talking about what the, what the promise of the internet coming down the pike. Simply put, this technology can't handle it. It can't handle the capacity, can't handle the speed, can't handle the, the, the volume of data that's exploding every day. My wife and my daughter, we live right, right behind the town hall, we have a little house. We already have eight devices hooked up to our in-home Wi-Fi. And you can already see the, you know, the strain, if you will. And that's only going to get, that strain is only going to get worse as time moves on, on this old technology. The last thing I want to say about the, about the old technology is that it's degrading over time, it's very hard to maintain. Those costs will almost certainly be passed on to us as subscribers and the town as a customer when it comes time to, to improve that network. So, we come to the solution. The proposed solution that we're talking, that we're here to talk about is that the town create its own fiber optic broadband network. We'll get into some of the details on the next slides, but with ownership, with municipal ownership of this, of this really vital infrastructure, we're going to be able to lower costs for the town, like directly. We're going to be able to avoid costs into the future, just by simply not having to buy this thing from Comcast anymore. The other great characteristics of a fiber optic network is that it is, by an order of magnitude, it's much higher speeds and capacity. One of the little tidbits I learned in my research as I was researching this stuff over the past couple of months, most of the internet today is actually, what they call the backbone, the trunk, is actually fiber optic. And it's what they call the last mile, which is connecting to facilities, premises, you know, buildings and homes, that's copper. So municipalities or localities or regions, because this is happening kind of all over the country, all over the world, who build their own fiber optic networks are basically connecting to the big fiber optic network. And that, that will result in tremendously higher speeds and higher capacity. And if, if implemented the way that we would like to have it implemented, it would also mean better service, better, closer to the source, you know, we're not, you know, relying on a, a huge, you know, global company to come and, you know, fix the wire in my house if a tree falls on it. So, the next slide, it's a, probably covered a little bit about this, but already it's the technology comparing the two types of systems, the two types of networks, rather. On the left, we have the coaxial cable, and on the right, some of the benefits of fiber optic. And this, we like this, this particular slide because it, over on the right, because it gives you some, some use cases, if you will, some examples of, of what a fiber optic network would actually look like in somebody's house or in a, or a building. We're talking about gigabits per second. Today, in, in the Comcast network, in my house, I measure it a lot now, now that I know how to do it, I get about 50 megabits download speed and 12 upload. So it's called 50/12. And that's, that's controlled, that's, that's, that's set like that by Comcast. With a municipal, with a fiber optic network, you have the option to go up to 1,000 gigabits, and that's up and down. So that's super fast up, super fast down. So that means, you know, you know, if it takes you, first of all, it means HD clarity on, when we're watching Netflix and, you know, that sort of thing. But some of these examples here, like if it takes, if it takes like a half an hour to download a movie, you know, on a fiber optic network, it literally takes like a couple of seconds. So that's the, that's the kind of relative speed that we're talking about. The other thing is that I wanted to, that I think is pretty huge, especially for a community like Milton, which is, you know, 97% residential, you know, most people in the town don't work in the town, they commute, is video conferencing, telecommuting. With this sort of connection in your house, and with a move, like my, my company does it, with a move towards allowing people to telecommute, a connection like this would just be, would just be tremendous. And of course, the, the last, the second to last thing is what I alluded to earlier, I already have, we already have eight devices going on in my house today in 2017, I have no idea what it's going to be 10 years from now. But with a municipal, with a, with a fiber optic connection, it almost literally doesn't matter how many devices you have, how much stuff you're downloading, how much data that you're consuming. So, turning the page here, some benefits to the town government. I'm going to go over town government, benefits to the town, benefits to the residents on the next app, on the next app. Again, I mentioned some of these earlier, but with, with ownership of the system, I already mentioned cost, that's the biggest thing. You know, avoid costs, we're going to avoid, you know, pain to, to, to the incumbent. You have the, the ability to innovate. You have the ability to, to, to use it the way that we want to use it, because we own it, right? So, you know, there are, just thinking of it kind of bureaucratically, you eliminate that layer, right, of having to go through, you know, a incumbent. You know, so thinking about the first responder networks, again, not an expert, but I do know that, you know, Homeland Security has a lot of different communication initiatives out there. I know the MDC does.
FirstNet, Open Cape, there's a few big ones on the Commonwealth.
Yeah, yeah. That, just right out of the gate, you know, it saves a lot of, not only cost, but a lot of heartache and, and effort, you know, if you, if we have this under our own control. Let's, let's face it, what we're talking about is sovereignty and control over this network. I keep calling it a network. I also like the term infrastructure. I mean, this is a communications infrastructure. The, the other two points I just want to hit on here is it actually opens up opportunity for revenue, for new revenue into the town. The technology is actually strands of cables, right, strands, strands of fiber optics. You can lease these strands. And a lot of owners of these networks do just that. If you have a, if you have a cable that has 80 strands in it, you know, I mean, you can rent, you can lease one out to a company and still have enough capacity to last you until, you know, until Star Trek comes along. I mean, I mean, we have, it's, it's a huge technological leap. And it's, I use the term state-of-the-art, it's actually been around for a long time, this, this technology, the fiber optic technology. But that, that, I think that's a very compelling argument that, you know, now the town has a way to generate revenue, in a way to generate revenue in a way that, in a way that, that we can control, that we can, you know, kind of pick and choose, you know, who we want to lease it to, that sort of thing. I think the revenue is a, is a, is a third, is the second compelling reason here. And then the last one is the, the business development, economic development. You know, we do have a small commercial footprint, if that's the right word, in Milton, I realize that. But there are some buildings out there, you know, that, you know, that if they were wired up to fiber optics, would be a huge attraction to firms locating here. So it has that, it has that, that aspect as well. I kind of skipped over the school thing, I mean, which I shouldn't have, but that's another huge opportunity with the fiber optics, being able to leverage what's happening out there in the world because of the benefits of internet communications. To benefits, benefits to residents, just right out of the gate, it's just less money. I'm going to, I wanted to stay away from numbers in this presentation, but I will say one example, that Chattanooga, Chattanooga, Tennessee, you know, big city, they have their own fiber optic network. They charge their residents to the home that's $80 a month for gigabit speed. And, I mean, that's just unheard of when it comes to, when it comes to the commercial world. I mean, you're just not going to ever see that price. So lowering costs right out of the gate is, is, I think, the hugest benefit to residents. The other thing I already mentioned is the, having the flexibility for our commuter, all our, all our neighbors and friends who are commuters for the, for telecommuting, a big attraction. I'm sure our real estate agents will like, would... I'm sure our real estate agents will like, would like this as a selling point that, to make Milton even, an even more attractive place to live than it is today. And then the last point that I want to make about the benefits to residents, because I invariably get this question when I'm talking to neighbors and friends about, you know, broadband Comcast, because people kind of conflate the two and think cable, right, cable The type of network that we're talking about is an internet network, right? There's a term that I came across that I learned this summer, it's called "over-the-top TV," which basically just means internet over, TV over the internet. So your Netflix, your Hulu, your Amazon, you know, and stuff like that. Everything that I'm, that I'm reading, everything that I'm hearing, you know, my research, as well as, this just kind of makes sense, almost all of our TV entertainment is going to be coming over the top eventually. And the household, the town, the community, you know, who has that fiber optic network is going to be right there, you know, ready to take advantage of that. And it's already happening, actually, somebody just told me recently that the Red Sox were streaming, which I didn't, I hadn't heard of. But that's an example of, it's the disaggregation of these cable systems, right, that's coming down the road. I have one more slide to share with you guys, I'm going to turn it over to Mike. Municipal broadband in other communities. Massachusetts, I think the last number that I read was 10. Concord built one, I know Norwood has one, Braintree has theirs. A couple towns have a municipal one only, Reading has a municipal only, Taunton has a municipal only. I think you mentioned the Open Cape.
Open Cape, FirstNet, which is the Commonwealth sewn system that they're trying to, you know, they're building, not trying, they're building out.
Yeah. And then, I don't know if this is the biggest one, but Holy O'Callaghan's one. So, and theirs is so successful, they're already servicing other towns. They're, I think they're servicing Chickapi. I know Concord is in talks with, making inroads with Acton. That was, I had a conversation with the executive director of the Concord Municipal Light Plant or the broadband network, and he said that that was, they didn't see that one coming. Basically, Acton came to Levenson Hague, you know, let's see what we can explore here. So that's just in Massachusetts. In the United States, that last count was 175. So not a tidal wave, but it's happening. And that's the United States. Globally, again, it goes by pockets, but it's happening, it's very, it's much more common in Europe, it's much more common in Asia. I think the, I think it was, I read about, South Korea, they were way ahead of the curve. They started building this stuff back in the 90s. And they topped every chart of like fastest and, you know, most penetration in fiber optics. So that's the end of my piece. I'm going to turn it back over to Mike for the last couple here.
Just, just very quickly, thank you, Joe, just very quickly, I just want to leave you with two images before I get to the request. One is, in terms of the technology, if you go to this, in Chatham on Cape Cod, there's a railroad museum, an old railroad museum, and you go in there and you can use an old telegraph machine. And that is the electronic pulses over the cable, over the copper wire, which they developed in the 1880s, right? That's what coaxial cable, copper wire is based on. This technology, the fiber optic, fiber optic and the, for the last mile, the fiber optic to the home, that is glass strands and there are electronic light pulses over the glass strands, and that just increases the speed unbelievably. The second image I want to leave you with is, in addition to all of the home components of this, and the law enforcement and public safety components to this, are the telemedicine, which is increasingly important. We have a hospital here, and increasingly seniors may not have to go to the hospital to have their appointments if they can, if they have this kind of, if we have this technology, they can have a video conference with their doctor so they don't have to take unnecessary trips to the hospital or to the doctor's office. So there are, there are, in addition, Joe alluded to the educational aspects to it. So it opens up a lot of opportunities in terms of public safety, education, you know, opportunities for seniors and residents. The challenges, it costs money, right? Wiring the town and wiring all the homes is a major investment. And that's why we're not coming here saying we should do this, we're coming here saying that we should explore it and see if it makes sense, because it's a major investment, it costs a lot of money, it's been done before, as Joe alluded to, but it does cost money and it would take a major investment on behalf of the town. Second, a lot of these, a lot of the communities in Massachusetts who have done this had experience with having utility owned by the community. They had municipal light, municipal electric utilities that were owned by, Braintree had one, a few of the other towns that have done this. So they've done this before, they had a utility owned by the town. Milton has not. This is new for Milton, this is new ground. Again, this is a reason we think it should be explored and reviewed, and we're not coming here saying we should do it, we're saying it's something that deserves and merits exploration at this point. Finally, if you're going to be in negotiations with Comcast, you will get significant pushback from Comcast. They will use any means at their disposal to push back on this because this is revenue for them, this is opportunity for continued business for them. So Comcast would definitely push back on this kind of initiative. Our recommendations, we are asking the Board of Selectmen to appoint a committee of residents, town officials, and others charged with exploring the possibility of developing a fiber optic municipal broadband network for the town. We think it could include residents, town officials, some of the private educational institutions that would be very interested in this, Curry College, Milton Academy, they would be very interested, as would Milton, Beth Israel Deaconess, Milton as well, they may be interested. So I think there's a broad range of stakeholders here from which you could choose to assemble a committee that could explore this. We think, since you're involved in the last year of your contract, even though it's separate, it's really separate from Comcast in many ways, it may make sense to do it sooner rather than later so that you see if this is a possibility. And then we propose that at some point, this committee may need to be funded to talk to consultants, and that may be something that you, if you decide that this merits going forward, you may want to ask Town Meeting next May for some consultant funding for, you know, sometimes that can range from a low of 20,000 to 25,000, sometimes up to 50, depending on the consultant, if the committee decides it needs a consultant. So our ask right now is to appoint a committee to explore this and then to be open to the idea for funding, should the committee decide that it needs a consultant. So, sorry for taking a little excessive time here.
No, it's a, it's a very, it's a very important subject. I think that, you know, we're constantly looking for efficiencies here in town, and we're looking to stay ahead of the curve, and, you know, we fancy ourselves as a, as a very good town, a forward-thinking town. And so this goes right along the lines of that. And I think with, you know, with the colleges, with the hospital, with our great public safety and higher learning institutions, we should be looking at this, we should be studying it, and it doesn't hurt to do so. And I think that, you know, first of all, thank you for taking the time to put this together. I think that, you know, it's going to be enlightening for other residents who are frustrated with the cost that they're paying. I know it's frustrating to probably all of us, so we can all empathize. And I think that this is a good start, and, you know, I personally would be in favor of the creation of the committee. I'll, you know, turn it over to my fellow colleagues for comments as well, but I would be.
I would as well. I think it's an idea worth exploring, and maybe what we should do, since the committee may need some funding, in May would be an appropriate time to seek the funding for it, was to try to get the committee in place soon so that they can start the exploration and then know whether we'd be in a position to fund it and to be thinking about it, because we'd have to submit an article in January for that. And I think you've got the right idea of putting residency and town officials on the committee.
Just following on both my colleagues is, when we spoke, we all hear from, just from the residents' point of view, people get very frustrated with service, with cost. We heard it from our attorney when he was in just a couple of weeks ago, he talked about, you know, the monopoly, even though we have RCN. Because sometimes people say, you know, can you get files? But you're still operating in the, in the commercial broadband business. That's the exact reason that the Commonwealth invested in FirstNet, is the reason that Cape went with Open Cape, was to, was to get away from being, and as we saw here, I think this was at my first four meetings for it on TV, because of an issue with Comcast just coming into this building, you know, the major, a major building in our own community. So, I mean, I'm prepared to make a motion right now that we create this committee, I don't know how the two of you feel, but I don't think we have to make the appointments tonight, but I make a motion that we create a broadband committee to look into this because you are correct, COP is done. COP is done on our phones, it's done on our radio communications, it's done, it's history. It's all, and point-to-point fiber, that's, you know, that's the way of the future. And I think if we can get on board and jump out ahead of it, we could really do a service to our community here, maybe in the long run. I think it's, as the chair said, I think, it's just worth doing it. So I'd make a motion, Mr. Chair, that, and that we create a broadband committee for the purpose of investigating the possibility of creating a municipal broad, I'll make the, I'll say exactly this, that we appoint a municipal broadband committee of residents and town officials, and people can apply just as they do in every other committee, and you can make the recommendations, and we can move forward, and as Katie said, start to get this ready so that by May, we can have an idea, who they are, what we want to do.
Yeah, I'll second the motion to create the committee. I do think we're going to need to develop a charge, and we've probably got to figure out how many people we want on it, some of the details, but we could hopefully be in a position to then appoint the committee and approve the charge if we commit.
And I think, in a future agenda, we could, we could kind of discuss the charge in open meeting and decide how many members we want to have serve and what we're looking for specifically, and then move forward.
I'm following that.
Okay, okay, so motion has been made, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks again, Joe, thanks, Michael.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sue. I think there's a lot of happy people watching at home tonight.
I think so, yeah.
It's out, the TV's out? How's it looking?
Oh, there we go.
Okay, item number nine on our agenda tonight is a conference with Howard-Saint-Hudson related to the East Milton Deck Project. We have members from Howard-Saint-Hudson, and we have our town planner, Bill Clark.
Good evening, Bridget.
Hi, Bridget, how are you?
Hi, Gary.
Good evening, Bridget.
Bridget.
Good evening, Bill.
Good evening. Back to talk about East Milton Deck. We had our meeting on the 13th of September. We came back and we had a meeting here two weeks ago. Since that time, we've asked Howard-Saint-Hudson to take a look at a few things, and Bridget said to answer some of those questions.
So, we looked at a few, after the public information meeting, we got some feedback, and so we did kind of take a quick look at laying out, you know, some additional parking spaces, some ideas we heard, and... So, the three we initially looked at were using Adam Street as it is today with an entrance and exit on Granite Avenue, as we didn't want to have an exit onto Bryan, because that would cause the cut-through traffic and signalization issues. Unfortunately, that's just a very awkward layout, you need to do kind of a three-point turn at the end there and to go out, and even exiting back onto Granite Avenue isn't the best situation because you're right at the intersection there. So, two others that we looked at, based on one of the ideas that we heard at the public information meeting, was having the same parking on the other side of Granite Avenue. So we looked at laying out parallel spaces as well, some reverse angle, just as another option.
So just for people who, you're talking about the northbound side of Granite Avenue, across from the liquor store.
Right. So, along the park. And we can give you a lot, so... So we looked at those options as well, but after giving them a further look with having parking on both sides of Granite Avenue, with having such a heavy traffic volume, I really do not think that's a good idea because you'll have cars that are trying to make parking movements on both sides of the street.
Simultaneously.
Right. So, you're already possibly going to have issues with people trying to go around, people trying to do parking maneuvers. As well, those cars could cause sight-distance issues for cars exiting the ramp, the slip ramp onto Granite. They're looking back to see, cars are coming on Granite Avenue, if there's cars parked right there, that may cause some sight-distance issues. So unfortunately, we didn't recommend any of those options. And I know since then, another idea has come into play about the parking on Adam Street with using the slip ramp as an exit. We did look at this, and the initial look at it was to have, the first thing I looked at was having the exit kind of within where Adam Street is today, so we would avoid the Article 97 issue because moving in any farther south or getting into that area of the park, so again, we run into the Article 97 issue. Having the exit right there at the northwest side of the slip ramp, it's pretty close to that intersection, and you're going to have cars that are coming down Adam Street, going onto the slip ramp, they'll have a green light, they're going to be kind of speeding up to make that green light to go around, you know, they're not going to be looking for cars that are coming out of this parking area.
So in fact, that could create some close calls where a car could have to stop short and you could get hit from a car from behind. Is that the way it's depicted?
Right, they'd be, a car might be trying to get out of that parking area, you know, they can all see that far.
And a car comes down the slip line, doesn't see it.
You might see if they have it, and then, but then a car's coming around the corner from the slip ramp.
Okay.
You know, so if you had to do that, you might have to signalize it, but really, even though, yes, you could only fit a few spots in there, so you might think, oh, we're not going to have that many cars coming out of there, we think you probably will have a decent amount of cars coming because people are going to use this and sort of try to find parking spaces. So you're going to have a bunch of people that are pulling in to see if there's a spot, no spots, you know.
So they're coming and going, yeah.
They're coming and going.
Bridget, before we move out that, I think we should credit Cheryl Taguayis, who's the chair of the Master Plan Implementation Committee and a member of the planning board, suggested we explore that, the exit into the slip lane, and Bill and I at the Master Plan Meeting the other night, and other members thought it was worth exploring. So thank you, thank you for looking into that. It was a creative idea.
It was.
And unfortunately, we have the Article 97 issue if we wanted to move it further down in the slip lane.
Yeah.
And for the record, the majority of the Master Plan Implementation Committee did want to pursue looking at that and some other options to, for future flexibility that I know we're going to get into. It was 11 o'clock at that point, so we had lost a couple of members, but it was, there was some support for looking into that. So thank you for doing that.
Mm-hmm. I have a problem. Right, so, yes, a safer version of that would be to have the driveway further south, but then, yes, you do get into the Article 97 issue because you're going to have a driveway through this, which is right now parkland. And after talking to Michael Trapanier, I'm SDOT, yes, the town can pursue the Article 97 issue, towns do it all the time, but he said that would, you know, he's like, you're looking at two years there with that. So, anything related to Article 97 really isn't going to fit into this schedule that we're on with our project, so we'll need to come up with an option or, you know, a design going forward that's going to meet our schedule so we can advance this project. I know that there's concern about converting the whole area to parkland, you know, so you don't want to lose this space for anything in the future, which I totally understand. So one of the more recent, after looking at these options that we didn't think would work, one possibility that we're thinking of right now is maybe to keep this area of Adam Street as a transportation-use area, just not with parking or vehicles. It would be pedestrians, bikes, emergency vehicles, maintenance, some way to get them in there, but, you know, you could keep the same alignment, you can keep the same width, curb-to-curb, and it could be paved or gravel or some sort of surface that would keep it kind of separate from the park area.
Using the same footprint that exists today.
Right.
So this board's concern, you know, the last time we met was blocking off Adam Street for good, and so that future, future boards, maybe five, 10, 15, 20 years, wouldn't have the opportunity, bless you, to consider, because who knows what the square is going to look like even 50 years from now, okay? You know, we won't be here, but that's just, it's reality is that, you know, we have to, you know... you know, have due diligence on this. And so we did get an opinion from town council today. Michael, do you, do you have that opinion with you?
Katie and I talked briefly.
Do you want to, do you want to just have a little update?
Sure.
Has Bridget had, has Bridget seen it?
I don't know the answer to that.
No.
Okay. So, I mean, town council's view is that in order to increase the size of the park, which is what your proposal is, if we were to progress over the closed section of Adam Street, that would require state approval, federal approval, and town meeting approval on our end. There is an argument that if you were, if it were to be done without town meeting approval and it became a grassy area, and over time it stayed that way, you probably would still be viewed as a park down the road for having been incorporated into the park. So, his view is that the only way to preserve our future flexibility was either reopen Adam Street now to through traffic, or to, as you said, keep it closed, but preserve it so that it's a paved way, and that, of course, brings up design issues. And there was a suggestion, again, from Cheryl, that possibly we could do concrete pavers, which has been done on other roads, that would make it look nicer, possibly fit into the park landscape better.
That's what's on the sidewalks, they know.
Yes, but to do this on the road rather than the asphalt. So, those, that would be really a way to preserve our future flexibility, and maybe not just for reopening Adam Street to traffic, but maybe to use it down the road to reconfigure for parking if necessary. After the, after this project, we could still, we could still try to pursue the Article 97 if we wanted to, whether it's through the slip lane or whatever, but it wouldn't affect your schedule if we were to do that, because you'd be just designing this as an area that's still paved, preserving it for pedestrian access, but not putting park benches or trees or anything like that on it. Now, we also had a conversation about the 1993 airspace license agreement, and maybe talking with DOT and seeing if they would be willing to amend that, so that we would have some language in there preserving the town's right to reopen Adam Street, whether it's to through traffic or use it for parking or some other purpose down the road, and that's, that's something that would have to really be negotiated.
You're talking like in the form of an easement, to get like a permanent easement.
Well, more of an amendment to, along those lines, but an amendment to the agreement, yeah.
So, we were thinking how would an easement work, and since it is officially planned, it's not like the town could take an easement on that, but yeah, I think it would have to be something that's...
What year did you say that was in?
1993. So, we'd have to enter into negotiations with DOT for that, and that, you know, that would probably involve the town's council, as well as their attorneys, as well as representatives of the town.
Right.
So, I think what we're realizing here is that, you know, we're up against the clock a little bit with time. You know, we've always said safety has been our biggest concern, but also, we need to prioritize the need to find parking, you know, and I think that, you know, Mike, if you want to elaborate on some ways with, that we've discussed about trying to find parking with Boulevard Street, and I think that this board is committed to trying to make sure that this project stays on its timeline, is a safe project, and I think, you know, we have to look at it now in a couple parts here, is that we get, maximize the money that we have at stake here, and do it in a safe and efficient way where pedestrians can gain better access, where it's, where it's, traffic flows at a much better pace, that we find a way to disable, cut through traffic by utilizing traffic enforcement, all the, all the intangibles that we have at our hands with this, while also trying to find parking at the same time to appease residents who want to shop and come into the business district. With that being said, this project has a couple parts here. Now, you've got the Adam Street, which we want to, we want to keep to, for future preserve in case it needs to be opened for future uses, but then also, the park space, I think we have to look at them all separately at this point, you know, and tackle them all one at a time, following the traffic design, which I think, I think we all agree now that we need to, we need to keep this moving to stay on the timeline, to maximize the federal money that we have to ensure a good product for our residents.
So, I agree with David and Katie both on that. So, my one question, I think I wrote it to Michael and Bill the other day, you had referenced in your email to us that you wanted to go back and look at, and I don't know if this involves Article 97 or not, so the spaces that exist on Bryant Avenue across from the Shell Station, which are now curbside parking, you had talked about either angle or reverse angle, and whether there'll be a net gain or not.
Net gain spaces or...
Yeah, from what accounts exist.
Oh, right, yeah. Yeah, when we were looking at, oh, up here or down?
Both, both.
Both.
Both. So, if you took what you initially proposed, and I believe it was in the first, proposal you first came out, it was the angleized, angle parking on Edge Hill from the post office up to Jack Rabbit, and then, in the most recent correspondence we got from you, you talked about converting on Bryant, because I'm trying to make up what you've addressed, which is the four spaces that exist on Adam Street, what's the net gain there if we were able to do both?
Okay, yeah. I didn't look at laying all that out yet, but when I, I did initially start looking at laying out the, what would have been a reverse angle on Edge Hill, that would convert that to a one-way, and it was, it was roughly two to one.
That's what I thought. We talked about this today.
About four of those spaces in the same spaces to the parallel spaces, so...
All right, so now I'm going to put you on the, now I'm going to put you on the spot, my third thought. This was in the proposal that came to us, when Alphador was the one, when he spoke to, at the hearing, we talked about, which she addressed earlier, the parking on the northbound side on... You had given us a diagram that showed some, I think, five or six reverse angles across from East Milton, from what I wrote in my email to two of you. While granted, if you, if those are regular-time, 30-minute or one-hour parking, I see the pressure it puts on, but if you took those and made those spaces long-term, saving maybe service, because you're still picking up, which where people park for like the whole day, early in the day, later at night, is that something that you see as feasible? I'm just trying to gain every space possible, yeah.
You say it's a reverse angle on Granite.
So, it's already there. She gave, the design she gave us of those reverse angles.
But those are the ones you were talking about, service.
Yeah, and I understood what she said about if they were regular spaces, you know, being used constantly, the turnover creates the greater possibility of a rare and collision, but if we made them service zone, which is all-day parking, because we did convert, we are converting Bryant Ave, we've already done that, we converted Bryant Avenue from service zone, that, that pressure still exists, and as I said to you today, even though we've moved it down Bryant Avenue between Boulevard and State, for now, we know that when the winter comes and the snow, they lose those spaces.
Right.
Because it just pushes, that's where the state pushes it, and they lose it. So, I'm just, because...
But I thought that both, granted, both reverse angle and the parallel on Granite would raise the Article 97 issue, because it's cutting into the park.
It definitely will.
It does, if you're going past the line there.
But that's something we could still continue to argue while moving on our timeline, though, am I correct?
I mean, even if they were all-day spaces, like if you have someone there...
Like, that's what I mean, service zone, they usually park all day.
That people aren't going to be coming and going, especially at rush hour, I guess.
You don't have to answer me now, I'm just throwing it out there as like, I'm just trying to, because we don't have like all-day parking, with the exception of employees who pretty much park for the day. And I'm just trying to get, you know, you designed it, so when I looked at it, I agreed with you in that as a regular 30-minute or hour space, it's just not a good thing, but maybe would have worked as a long-term all-day space.
I think you would still have...
Okay, all right, that's, that's...
...the issues there. I think a better spot would, to do that, would be on Bryant, but...
I'm, 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 I want to hear that net gain, right, I get that. But that's something we can fight for.
Right, the town.
Right. This is not, though.
Up here?
Edge Hill Road is not part of the Article 97, right, right.
That's just a town decision.
Okay, but that was in your initial plan, your initial design, I believe, when I first, am I right, Bill? The first, when it first came out?
Edge Hill?
Yeah, called for angle parking on Edge Hill.
We said, we said...
Yeah, I think way back they have.
Yeah, you did.
Yes.
Okay, that's my...
That's where we picked up, I believe on the 13th, we actually said that. We said we would come back and do it later, because it's outside, actually, the scope of what we're looking at, but they're close enough to this project that we can actually add in 10-plus spaces in that area.
Okay, here's my last question, too, and this is not part of the project, this is just a question I'm going to throw out to you. Looking at the whole, the totality of the square and the project that we're about to move forward on, the Granite Avenue squonam upgrades that are going to take place there from Mass Highway, what would be your recommendation? And you don't have to answer this now, you can think about the Wood Street overpass as it comes into Adam Street. Look, I was chair of the traffic council for 10 years, I have to ask this question. I mean, only because it's one, if, I've been looking at this every day now for so many years, I can't count, but it's the one, when I look at this, I just, I've listened to everything you've said to us, I've tried every, I was, as I said, I was the last one to go with this concept, but I've bought into it, and I support it, but that one aspect of it still is like a rock in my shoe, a big rock, that I just think we...
That's been a big issue for our friend Tom, too.
Yeah, and Tom, I didn't, I didn't even know you were talking about it, but it just, it's something that I think we need to address in this, to just do it right.
Yeah. No, I've heard a lot about that.
Speaking of Tom, he just walked in, but I was going to bring up the point, he and I talked this afternoon, and Tom likes the parallel parking on Granite, and I was planning on mentioning that you like that, Tom, but Bridget has kind of mentioned that it raises our Article 97 issue, so, and 4F, and she is concerned about the timing in connection with this project.
I just asked that even though if we could not, you, I understand that if you use it as regular 30-minute or one-hour parking, the cost is, even if we made it, could make it service zone where they sit all day, it's still a gain of six spaces. You know, to me, and I know you agree, every space we can gain in this, in the whole puzzle, takes pressure off the neighborhoods, off the side streets, that's, that's why, I just asked her that, if there was a feasible thing to do. So, can you come back, at least give Bill and Mike an answer on the, I really want to hear the net gain on Bryant Ave and combined with Edge Hill Road. Is that all right with you, Mike? Is that okay? All right with that?
Right.
So, I think what we've come up with will at least address our future flexibility, which is, was my big concern at the last meeting. Can we move on to the park or before, I've got a couple of things on the park. So, at one point, when we were talking about the prior design, we were going to have the 25 spaces next to the park, I think that was the, the argument for activating the park. You'd need the, you'd need the parking area really for food trucks or, I looked at Tom when I say the food trucks, because I know that was one of his big points. It seems that now that we're not going to have a fairly large parking area next to the park, in the sense that I got from the public meeting also, was that we're really looking at more of a passive park than an active park, and I know at the public meeting in September, there was talk about water fountains and other ways to activate the park, and my sense, in my personal view on this at this point, is that passive park is probably more in line with what the funding would allow and with what the sentiment of the commenters has been, and really is not possible to do anything more than that without having the parking next to it. I don't know whether everyone agrees, but that's at least my sense, and I, I think in the, in the contract that you've submitted for the next stage is, there's still some references, I think, to activating the park that we should see whether we're in agreement with, or whether we need to modify those going forward, because Halverson is being proposed as the landscape architect, and there needs to be some direction to them as to what, what we're looking for, and I do want to pass along two comments that Cheryl Togayis mentioned to me, as things we should suggest for Halverson. One is that Halverson should probably be the one that designs the lighting in the park, because, rather than an engineer to do it, it probably makes more sense for the landscape architect to do it. And she also pointed out the scope of work for Halverson does not include public meetings, and her thinking was that there should be at least one or two opportunities for Halverson to show some of those charrettes or the drawings to the public and get input and feedback on what their design is, and whether that really meets with what the neighborhood and the town as a whole would like to see on the overpass.
I think just to follow up to what you're saying, based on town council's statement, just the way, we're not designers, just the way you're thinking tonight is that I think the landscape designer will still be able to grasp some of that, the passive use of it, if it's pavers or, or even if it's paved, I think that, I mean, they do that now, the Chamber of Commerce does it in their hall length, and they use it in that type of, if it's going to have pretty much the same footprint, I think you'll be able to do that, I really do. I think, I don't think that'll be a, a big, as big a hurdle as finding more spaces has been...
Yeah, I agree.
But it's smaller, it's not 25 spaces, you know, that's really...
As I said earlier, we need to look at this in kind of three different components, you know, and work to get the signalization, the traffic flow and the safety measures taken care of first, you know, look at Adam Street as it is and how we can preserve it for future possibilities, and then, then take on the park space as another component, but knowing that all of this is in the works, that, and that we're cognizant of the possibilities. But I think that, I think that we need to get the ball rolling on the first phase, and then, and still continue these discussions on both others.
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure we were, we at least gave some direction to Howard St. Hudson, because I think there's still some thinking that there's going to be a lot of activation at that park, and even though we'll have the closed roadway area, that's still smaller than what the 25 spaces would have been. So, you know, for certain, for the Halloween event, for the holiday event, that probably works, but for a more frequent, frequent, whether it's a weekly event, I'm not sure that we're really going to have the space to be able to do that if we were to try to activate the park on a more frequent basis, which was really kind of what the original idea was.
I go back to what you said, David, I'm just going to put a little faith in the design here, there's obviously been a lot of residents weighing in on this, I just have faith that something better is going to come out of this from what it is today. We, I don't, we're not, I just don't think we have the expertise, we don't, but I have, I do have the faith in that.
But there is a difference between a passive park...
Right, I get that, oh, I get that, I get that.
We've had lots of different designs for the park, from the so-called pagodas to the fountain that was planned for 1993. I mean, I spent a crazy amount of time today looking for plans for town council, and one of the things I came up with was the fountain plans that we had for 1993. Pages of design for that fountain that never get built. The rest of it is just the detail for how the deck is created, how the spaces that, in the small space to the right, it was open space before, I mean, in opening that went down to the highway, and showed how they decked over the whole thing.
But in other words, we're contemplating bike paths and walking paths, but not necessarily the old plan, which was a gazebo with the monuments all in that location, surrounded by a large green area for people to, you know, kids to run out and play on, it, that really kind of contemplated the larger parking lot adjacent to it. So, I, I think we've moved on from that, and we're looking more at the trees, and we understand that because the waterproofing, the existing park has to be come up, and has to go back, then one has to go back down, but it sounds to me, from the comments I heard, and what I think is probably best, is we go back to the, pretty much what it is now, more of a passive park, walkways, bike paths, but not necessarily planned for a lot of activity to be there.
If I go back, do I still have faith?
Tom's smiling, I think he's disagreeing with me over here.
I do, I really, I really do.
I think, I think we're still, I think, look, like I said, I think we look at this in three different components. I think there's still time to look at that, but I think that, you know, we need to make decisions as a board, and I think that as a board, we need to make a decision on, you know, you know, I think we agree now that Adam Street should have the possibility of being reopened at some point in time for future boards and generations, if so need to be, and preserve that space so that it isn't parkland, but I think that, I think that the park, you know, we can, we can set it in motion around the way this, you know, the traffic signalization is designed, but look forward to a community process, a long-term process, and look to funding and input from the community to decide what that will be for the future. I don't think we closed the door on that at all. I think that that's, that door is open, and I think that the community needs to weigh in on that, but I think we focus on, on the signalization and safety process first.
So, do we need to make a motion on this tonight, to hold this forward?
Yeah.
The signals, the...
To get to the 75 percent.
To get to 75 percent.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's coming anyway, right? But, I mean, I, I think...
I mean, we've just been, you know, waiting for...
Right, and I think what, I think the approach that we came up with today with town council, which is to try to amend the 1993 agreement and keep the, and to tell Howard St. Hudson our desire, if everybody agrees, would be to keep that roadway just paved and possibly do the concrete pavers, as Cheryl suggested, but not plan at this stage to grass it over and put trees in there, unless we can somehow work that kind of a plan out as, as part of amending the 1993 agreement.
I mean, I think from a functional point of view, if you look at it now, it's a walkway, that's what people use it for.
It is, and that's what we found in our observations, that that's the path of travel that most pedestrians take anyway, which is kind of why we had that initial drawing of the Scherius Path, kind of going through that area.
And it's passive, and I go, I think that, I go back to what I said, I am having some faith here that you're going to come to us, given all the limitations we have, that it's going to be something that can be more functional as, than it is today.
Yeah, and I think now that we, you know... Yeah, and I think now that we, you know, we have that-
Yes, I'm hoping, yes.
Direction, and we have a landscape architect who knows more about this than I do, that they can, you know, come up with something that works within, within our budget, within the funding that we have, just-
The budget is the issue, most of the funding is gonna go to the traffic signalization and the striping, so there's not gonna be much funding for the park itself.
Right, and we, and we've, we've always known that, this isn't gonna be like, yeah, it's not the park, it's not the big huge mountains, you know, we've got the traffic, we've got the, you know, find the parking, and then we'll work on the deck.
Okay, so what do you need us?
So, you wanna have, you wanna motion, I guess we'll just move to, I'll move to authorize Howard Stein-Hudson on behalf of the town to move forward to the 75 percent design stage, preserving the roadway as a paved roadway, not, not included within the park, and also to authorize the town administrator, the planning director, Town Council, and I think probably the chair should be involved in this as well, to work, to see if we can, work towards amending the 1993 agreement with the Department of Transportation, or at least enter into negotiations with them, if that's at all possible, and if they're willing to do it.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? See, is there a discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
The contract, can we sign the contract so that we can move this ahead, so we can do our one, two, three steps?
Is it ready to be signed, is it?
It is, I think it is, I mean, the, the reason I brought up checking the language of the park in here is I think there are areas where there's talk about a very active park, but I think subject to changing it is necessary for that, or at least understanding that the budget is gonna drive that, and the lack of parking might drive it also, I'm trying to look what it's called, I guess we just, I'll move that we authorize, there's, authorize the town administrator and/or the planning director-
Tinge on addressing the issue as the traffic improvements are first and foremost.
Yes, well, and I think that this amendment does that, so it doesn't say what the name of this contract is, but I'll just move that we authorize the town administrator and/or the planning director as appropriate to execute the contract with Howard Stein-Hudson and the subcontractors, to move the project forward to the 75 percent design stage.
So, and just a note to you there, we wanna make sure that in this design, that your cognizance, there's a 350th clock similar to what exists at Central Avenue, that is, that is in our possession, the town's possession, to be placed in a very nice spot there on that, so if you could just, I'm sure Bill will stay on you about that, but, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we have a motion?
You second again, Richard?
I'll say it, yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bridgette.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number 10 on our agenda is a discussion related to the Massachusetts State Lottery Commission, if Administrator Denny would like to give us a little update on that.
Sure, so on September 29th, we received a letter dated September 26th from the Massachusetts State Lottery, and it reads, "Massachusetts State Lottery is offering a keynote monitor to existing 7-Eleven stores in your city or town to display the game at their location in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 10, Section 27A, as amended. You are hereby notified that the lottery is intent to install a monitor at the following location in your community, 590 Randolph Street," which I'm assuming is 590 Randolph Avenue.
It is, yep.
"If you object to these agents receiving a monitor, you must do so in writing within 21 days of receipt of this letter." So we're here today-
So, yeah, let's open this up for discussion, what does that mean?
Means that Houston Ave is gonna come, like, we have to look for one as well.
It means that they're all, they're all, they're all gonna do it, and, you know, I'll quickly voice my displeasure for that, I just, you know, I think that, it's my opinion as a town, you know, I think, actually, I think that the former chief could probably speak a little bit more to what that could do in certain areas, I don't think that, when you look at the kids in, in the town who go to these stores, the activity that goes on, the amount of traffic that goes in and out, you look at 590 Randolph Avenue, it's already overburdened with activity, you'll have more people on foot crossing there, it's just, to me, I don't like it.
A second, you know, come on, but go ahead, I won't make a motion.
I'll throw it if that's the right phrase, no, I, go ahead, Richard, I don't-
No, go ahead, no, go get, go get it.
Well, I, I agree, I don't think it's in keeping with the character of the neighborhood of the town, because this particular location is within a residential neighborhood, and there are, I'm in that store a lot, there are kids who are in that store, and I, I don't think that's really the right forum, that's not what we want in, in an environment that does attract kids and families who go in there and shop, and, and I, so I just don't even think there's a real demand for it, I've never heard anyone say we really need to have the keynote monitors, as I understand it, Mike told me, we do have the keynote to go, which is somebody who just goes in and buys a ticket, like you'd buy a quick pick for a lottery ticket.
You can look at it on your computer or wherever.
Yeah, but not, but not sitting there watching the monitor and playing all day.
And if you, and if you look at the landscape of, we have a lot of community-based stores, you know, you know, whether it be the old Matrakuses or, you know, the Food Mart, or you have, you know, the old Brewsters down on, on Houston Ave, and now up there at, at St. Elizabeth's as well, so.
So, can I, you good?
Yes, the reasons.
Brewsters, I, I agree with you, Brewster's amazing myself, Houston Avenue is converting right now, they're gonna be done any day, so if you, my opinion, and I agree with both my, if you open the door, they're coming next, and what's to stop? Tedeschi's, I mean, Matrakuses, Milton Food Mart, and who knows who else? My only question to you is, do you think, because we've never had to do this, is there anything specific that they're looking for on writing with it, in your denial?
So it's come to my attention, Town Council, Katie has done some research on this work, Town Council has also represented another community-
That did this?
That objected to it, so there is, there is language that he feels comfortable writing, it can come from here, it can come from the board, doesn't matter to me, I, I hear, the three of you loud and clear, it's not gonna do anything to the keynote-to-go stations that are already in place in these locations, but yeah, just the, the objection letter is, is something that Town Council has done before for another community, and with your direction, I'll, I'll make sure that we-
I'll make a motion, if it's okay with you, that we direct the town administrator to respond to this, our feelings are negative, do you wanna add something to it?
Can I, can I offer a friendly amendment, I, I want, I mean, I agree with us drafting a letter, I, I'd like Town Council to have some input to it, and I think we could, we could-
Okay, that's fine, yeah, I'm fine, that's what Mike said about the legal aspect of it, I don't wanna see us lose it, if we only have one chance to do it.
Yeah, exactly, and, and for all of us to have an opportunity to review it, and maybe get some comments on it, but we are under a tight timeframe, and, and I would suggest that we authorize either the chair or the town administrator to sign the letter on our behalf.
I agree, I'm fine.
Okay.
So I'll second that with a friendly amendment.
Okay, any discussion?
Mm-mm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
How many days you went to it now, from the letter?
Dated the 26th, I think we calculated that due back to them on the-
20th?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's see. Work on it tomorrow.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, item 11 on the, the agenda is a discussion related to the October 2017 special town meeting articles. Any discussion?
I don't think so.
I don't think, no change, right?
No changes from the previous.
Orans were mailed out, I received mine on Friday.
I did as well.
Yep, I have mine at my house. Okay, Traffic Commission Recommendations, we have Chief King with us, it's item number 12 on our agenda. Good evening, Chief.
Hi, guys.
Chief, what's up?
Chief. I'm gonna go off for a sec, I'm gonna accuse myself. Thank you. Am I waiting, or just going ahead?
No, we're all set.
Okay. Just going off the minutes here we sent over, go through the, in order, and then I'll skip over the rest, if you have a question, you can ask me, but the first one up is State Street, just below halfway down on the first page, it's to install a stop sign on the westbound side of State Street at the intersection of Grafton Ave, there's currently no stop signs at that intersection, and weirdly, there's one in the opposite direction, so on State, if you were coming from Plymouth down towards Grafton, there is one, if you're coming from Plymouth going towards Bryant Ave, there is not one the opposite, it wasn't a mistake, I researched it, it looks like about nine years ago, it was granted in one direction and not the other, but there's been a couple accidents there, there are some visibility issues, so we feel putting a stop sign in the other direction would help with safety. The next one down is Brewster Road, and I'll do the second and the third together, Brewster Road and Haberview Park, those two streets run parallel to each other, basically from like Ridgewood over to the Hanton over to Sassamon, and what's happening in the evening rush hours is when Randolph Ave backs up, people are going up Ridgewood Road, turning right on either Brewster or Haberview to cut over and eventually go out Eager Road to Randolph Ave to avoid Randolph Ave traffic. You know, those are small streets, they don't usually get a lot of traffic, so there's never been a stop sign there, it tended to only be locals, and they knew to stop, but both of those stop sign recommendations are because of the fear of an accident from people kinda cross blindly on the Hanton or Sassamon, as you go up and you don't realize it's an intersecting street.
Lots of kids, too, around that area as well, right?
Yeah, so those kinda go hand in hand, there was logic on those two.
Great, and we have a motion before us?
Do you wanna make this one, Richard?
Yeah, so, to approve the following recommendations of the Traffic Commission's September 27th, 2017 meeting, in the Article 8, Section 12, State Street, to install stop signs on the westbound side of State Street at the intersection of Grafton Avenue, Brewster Road, to install two stop signs on the southbound side of Brewster Road at the intersection of the Hanton Ave and Sassamon Ave, and 3 Haberview Park, to install two stop signs on the southbound side of Haberview Park at the intersection of the Hanton Ave and Sassamon Ave.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I did receive thank you notes from members of both of those neighborhoods for both having been heard by the Traffic Commission-
Good.
And their findings, they're very excited to see the town move so quickly to, A, listen to their concerns, and B, to move so quickly with it, so both of those neighborhood groups appreciate it and have acknowledged the fact that-
That's great, and, and they, they're a very active group with, with families of different ages, and, you know, we're glad that they were able to work with us to help highlight the need and, and, you know, help move this forward. That's great. Okay, item number 13 on our agenda is boards and committees appointment, the Logan Community Advisory Committee.
I'll move that we reappoint Cindy Christensen of 59 Collmore Road as Milton's representative, and Michael Andresino of 225 Woodland Road as Milton's alternate representative to the Community Advisory Committee to serve through October of 2019, and there, this is a very inactive committee, but there are occasionally emails that come out from the former, from the chair, even though it's an inactive committee, so for the sake of any potential future emails or things that may come up, which is very unlikely, it's seen that we may want to continue these appointments for a while longer.
I'll second for the purpose of discussion, what is the Logan Committee, I don't, I'm just not sure what this committee is, the Logan Advisors, not the CAC, what is it? No, it isn't.
There were, there were two CACs, there's only really one now, but, which is the Massport one, which is the next one, but the Logan CAC has wound down, but occasionally, there's still communications that come in from the chair, Darrell Palminter, and this, the Logan CAC, you know, we don't really think there's gonna be any activity with that, but given some periodic emails that came in, it seemed like maybe extending it for a little while longer, in case there's any follow-up or any post-winding down stuff.
We need to have people in place in the event that it does come across.
Okay, so, I'll second that, as it's originally written at 2018, and if, when we get into discussion, I'll give you my rationale why, is that okay?
Yeah, I mean, I made a motion for 2019, but if, do you wanna, this may not even be around at that-
I'd rather amend it as written for 2018, and then talk about why and discussion, but-
Sure, we can, we can, you can open up discussion right now.
All right with that?
Yeah.
Well, I don't wanna accept it as a friendly amendment, but I think we should have the discussion.
We can have a discussion, yeah.
All right, so my discussion, and it was, it was written, it, this, the 2019 was a change, which came today, my only thought is, and, and I've said this many times to you, and I appreciate everything, that all the residents that, that have worked in this, whether it's the Anac, the CAC have done, but this has been the biggest learning part for me coming in here, and especially the work both of you have done, and Mr. Hurley beforehand, I just see that this, now we're investing town money, legal fees, legal counsel, initiatives that you've taken with our co-parts in Boston and Dorchester, all the meetings that you've gone to, and this board expanding to five, I could see this easily in not, because this is gonna be a long-term fight, being a town official, being a CAC rep, whether it could be a member of the board, it could be the town administrator, I just see that as a possibility, this is such a dynamic thing, I just would rather do this for a year versus two years, that's my thought on it, and keep it to 2018.
Are you suggesting, Richard, having a member of the board or the town administrator be the CAC?
It could be, it could be, but I just see this, I look at the amount of time you put in, and you put in, I mean, it may get to the point where we actually want the voice of an elected official representing our community in this, I'm assuming, I'm not making that as a motion today, but if you do this for two years, you're locking yourself into this for two years, and I just look at how many things have changed in the seven months I've been in this room, for each, all of you, way more than me, that's just my own thought, it's just that I think that, when you appoint, I will, I will second it, as it was originally written for a year, and vote on it until 2018, but I think this is a, you wanna take, this is one of the biggest fights you've ever gotten into, as far as a community.
So does any, does any, does any community have a member of their board or town administrator right now, do we know?
I don't believe so.
Or a city official?
Or a city official.
City official, or a city official.
Or a city official, okay, I'm not, I'm not sure, I don't have any answer to that. I do, I do appreciate your comments and can understand why, and this is a marathon, not a sprint, I can totally appreciate that, but we do have, and Cindy Christensen is someone who has given-
Right, I get that.
... a PhD statistician who, you know, who's working essentially for free on our behalf, which is, which is truly amazing, and representing the whole town the best she can, and it's hard to find a replacement for that, but you do bring up a compelling point, Richard, related to that, I mean-
Two years is a long time from now, and this, this is a mountain, this is a significant, I've not been in this room, but this is not a discussion, or that a citizen or an agency is not, is neither not corresponding with us, asking to meet with us, an elected official from another community.
Could you see, Katie, a, a member of a five-member board, being a representative on that, the thing is, the hard part for me-
No.
Okay, the hard part for me is, is understanding the data and being able to, so, so this has been a, a process by which it's institutional knowledge, and so, let's say I was just appointed as that person, I would have to start at square one and, and develop these relationships and, and the terminology, which I think we're all, we're all becoming, not experts, our Anac people and, and the residents who do the, the work every day are our experts.
If you were either one or two, you wouldn't have to start at square one, I, I'm not, I'm not saying this to you, but I'm just saying, I'm just giving you-
But you understand where I'm coming from, so-
I think, well, this, this is just the Logan CAC, the Massport one is, is the next appointment, but in terms of both of them, I mean, the CAC, I've met a lot of them, and they're not elected officials, or, I mean, Boston might have one person who is, is a city official, but there are six Boston people, and it's, you know, they're, I don't think it's because of that person's office, I think it's more to represent different sections of the city, but the CAC, the people who serve on the CAC, the Logan CAC, you see had people who served on it for 15, 20 years, because there's so much expertise that's required, it's one of those really technical, detailed, very involved things, that somebody coming in really, it takes a long time to get up to speed on.
Right, I get that.
And Cindy has really gotten up to speed on it, I mean, she's, she's working dozens of hours a week on this, in addition to her job, sometimes even more than dozens of hours a week, and she's put forward some really good ideas, one of them is Congressman Lynch's idea, the legislation he just filed on the consensus report, so I wouldn't wanna lose, I wouldn't wanna lose that knowledge by-
I'm not saying, I'm just saying, too, that two years is a long time, I just thinking, why take away your-
Well, it's a long, it's a long time, but it's, it's also, it's not anywhere near as long as what the CAC reps from most communities really serve, I mean, the, the former president, Darrell Palminter of, of Boston, he was the Logan CAC chair, from, and he's, he's been on that for something like 20 years, most of the members have been very longstanding, we've always had members from, on the CAC from the community who served six or seven or eight years, for the most part, Chrissy Ambuto was our most recent one, he could only serve for a couple years and had to step down for other reasons, but most of them to step down for other reasons, but most of them have served for a good number of years. Judy Kennedy served for a lot of years. So, there's been, I think there's a need to have expertise, and that's why I suggest we go about two years, because that way, you're giving the person who's there, you know, assurance that they're gonna be there for a while, give them the commitment and the willingness to put in the hours and do it, rather than, well, you might be there for a few more months, and then you might be out next year. So, I think it's important for the town to extend the term a little bit. Some communities might even do it indefinitely. We tend to do it, some community, some community, the Conservation Commission, they have three-year terms. They're all over the map.
Can I just ask a question? This is a how-many-year term we're renewing tonight? This is a one-year term?
It, it has been for the last two years. It's actually been on, we've had a Massport CAC only for three years, so we--
It's been three one-year terms?
It has been, but there was no, I mean, that was just kinda done because--
So, I was, you know, Katie, you've been our liaison to the, for airplanes, and you've done a fabulous job doing it. I don't have to tell you that, and I think the people at home know that as well.
It's a team effort.
So, I was kinda curious, I wanted to know myself, you know, exactly, you know, why this would make sense. And, and I think for stability purposes, that does help us. I think, in my opinion, it does. I think only, I think because, you know, you have someone who has the institutional knowledge, who's working with the members of ANAC and the Fair Skies Groups. But, you know, I mean, Richard, if you had somebody else that you had in mind--
I don't. No, I'm just, I'm just, I'm thinking, I'm with this Board, right here. I'm thinking, like, it's, actually, it's been a one-year appointment now, I just see it's highlighted inside two years--
Well, I'm suggesting we make it two-year appointment.
--with a question mark, and I'm like--
Yeah, I don't--
I would make it another year, I just, but I just see, this is something that's, like, especially you, more than me. You've been in this up to, it just, that's all. And now, and the one meeting that I got, that I did have with Massport is the fact that they have an executive director, a paid position, and the CAC is gonna change, so, and I, I'm just--
I think, so you're bringing up good points.
I'm retelling our rights, not the candidates' rights.
Richard, you bring good points, okay? And that's why, you know, you know, I think we also have to have faith, too. I think that, you know, we're here, we're elected to make the best decisions on behalf of our residents, and I think that that's our fiduciary responsibility in every sense of the way that we're supposed to look out for the best interest. And, you know, if, you know, so, I am leaning on my colleague here, you know, who's been, you know, knee-deep in this, and I think that--
I'm ready to vote.
I think it would be too busy for a member of the Board, even with five members--
I'm just saying, I'm just saying that, it's like--
It is a huge commitment.
This is something where we're spending money, we're spending town resources--
I agree.
Nothing against a citizen--
And that's why, I'm not 100% on saying we go to two here, if, you know, we go, we can go right back and reappoint if it's been done that way every year, you know? But, I would hate to say that, you know, we went to one, and then, and then there was a switch made next year, just for the sake of making the switch, because I don't think that's the right thing to do.
That's probably the reason why I asked--
The continuity.
If it's been a one-year--
So, if we're happy with our CAC rep, then I think we should make that commitment. And I see no reason, my opinion, based upon the, the work that's been done, you know, the support that our CAC rep has given our elected officials at every level, whether it be, you know, through the, through the state representative, through our, through our Senator, and through our Congressman, I think there's a good working relationship there, and I would hate to break that long-term.
But, keep in mind that, you know, whoever our CAC rep is, that person's appointed by the Board, is representing the Board. The Board has a major role to play in the airplane issue.
But, I'm saying that.
So, there's gonna be oversight.
I'm saying that.
So, there's oversight. The CAC rep is serving at the CAC, but is not kind of the general airplane czar for the town. The Board of Solitude still has a very important role, the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee has an important role. We'd like the Board of Health to become more--
Ultimately, we're making the decision at the end of the day.
That's right. But, the CAC--
I agree.
The CAC rep is, got a narrow focus on the CAC. It's not the broader issue in general.
Right.
So, I, I think we should extend it for two years, and that, the reason it's listed here, I think with two choices, is because I had suggested we do it for two years rather than one. There's nothing in the statute that requires any particular term, and some of them are indefinite.
I think that's a very good discussion, and I think, Richard, you bring up a lot of good points, and for us to be thinking about that in the future, and with a five-member Board, and, you know, that's another thing that we'll talk about later as a future agenda item, is how we transition to that, but that's for another--
We need a bigger table.
We do. Maybe a different setup.
Okay. Okay, so, there was, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, the next one is for the Mass, Boards and Committee Appointments, the Massachusetts Port Authority Community Advisory Committee.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
So, I'll make that motion to appoint Cindy Christensen of 59 Collmore Road as our representative to the Massachusetts Port Authority CAC Committee to serve through October 2019.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item number 15--
Thank you.
Boards and Committees' Appointments, Regional Fair Housing Committee, South Shore Home Consortium.
I'll move that we appoint Connor Murphy of 359 Thatcher Street, Joseph A. Duffy, Jr. of 6 Westbourne Street, and Alexander Whiteside of 79 Hillside Street to the Regional Fair Housing Committee to serve through October 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. In the Town Administrator's Report, Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, thanks for having me. So, I'd extend a very warm welcome to Birch Amor, who started today as the town's first Code Enforcement Officer. Showed up bright-eyed and bushy-tailed this morning. Joe Prandak took him around offices and introduced him. He's a lifelong Milton resident, Milton High graduate.
He is.
He's an attorney, really, really bright guy. We're very lucky to have him. Looking forward as a future agenda item to bring himself and our first Code Enforcement, first Chief Procurement Officer, Arlene Zuniga, and our first Environmental Coordinator, Hillary Wait, in here for the November 13 people, so people can get to meet them publicly on television. But, yeah, we're, we're very lucky to have Birch.
Great.
Lot of work to do, obviously, and he's, he's up for the task, so, very welcome. Andrews Park Playground, the construction, the equipment has been taken away. I believe the equipment's gonna be delivered sometime later this week. Installation of the new equipment should start the week of October 23rd. So, if Kevin Cook continues to wake up, and it's 68 degrees in October, then we should get a lot of use out of this before winter gets here. So, hopefully the weather cooperates, and we can just piggyback on what's going on up the street at Shields Playground, which I see people in the dock out there with their minivans, and tons of use. So, huge asset to the town.
Huge asset.
Milton Playground planners, I believe they have an event Saturday, this Saturday at the Milton Who's--
It's, it's in a couple weeks, yeah, at the Milton, a masquerade ball, yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was the 21st, yeah, a couple weeks away.
So, and they're 80%, 80, 88% of the way there, I think, to reaching their goal? Incredible.
Yeah. And all the designs for the Andrews Park Playground is--
I went down checking. I've been taking my--
Off the charts, yeah.
Daily walks.
Yeah. Shredding Day, special thanks to Mary Ann Sullivan, her team, and District Attorney, Mike Morrissey, this past Tuesday. 275 residents came through. It was quite an operation. I went by a couple times, waited in line, watched the operation. It's quite an operation, very important these days, obviously, with what's going on with companies like Equifax and things that happen in the world with identities being, being stolen, so--
Was our District Attorney present? Was he there?
He was, yeah.
He was?
Yeah. He gave some do's and don'ts. They gave a lecture inside the Council on Aging beforehand, probably during the cars coming through, but, yeah, almost 300 cars, which is impressive, and quite an effort by Mary Ann Sullivan and Patty Manville, who helps from Milton Police, literally directing traffic, so. Thursday, October 19th, there's a 2017 flu vaccine clinic at the Council on Aging from 4:30 to 6:30.
Bring your insurance card.
For ages, ages four and up, yeah, bring your insurance card, injections only. So, if you're afraid of needles, that is not the place for you. But, the help, hats off to the Health Department for running that. One of my guys had the flu last week, it's, it's not fun, so. The Vaccination Clinic is Thursday, the 19th. Viola Massenzio, I knew I wouldn't say her name correctly. Everyone at the Council on Aging was saddened a few weeks ago on her passing, longtime friend. 72-year Milton resident, frequent flyer at the Council on Aging, by all accounts, the most avid bridge player in, in the building. She passed away at 101 years young.
Wow.
So, there's an actual celebration of her life on October 29th over at the Council on Aging, but Mary Ann Sullivan talked to me this week about it, late last week, about what a person she was, and, and she, what she meant to that place and the facility. She'll truly be missed, but a true Miltonian, 72 years in the town, 101 years old, so we hope she rests in peace. Couple of future agenda items we can talk about later. Just with, just talking about trash and recycling in the town, with the recent restrictions at our disposal site, and what we went through contractually to make sure that we had a place to take our material and the price increase that went with it. Couple of that with the hiring of our Environmental Coordinator, and we're starting to get back to a more proactive inspection of what's being put curbside. It's not a great story. Lot of people, I think, aren't purchasing stickers or buying, renewing their annual stickers, so I just wanna reiterate that people purchase stickers if they're putting trash out, or come into Town Hall and buy a prorated annual sticker from the Treasurer, because we are seeing material put curbside that is not put out properly. And there are people driving around nowadays with rejection stickers, unfortunately, so if you see an orange sticker on your barrel, either call Public Works or talk to the Treasurer's Office about stickers, so. Not a great story, but something that needs to be done, as, we are a pay-as-you-throw community. The alternative is, is to, you know, catch up on recycling initiatives and see what can be put in the recycle bin, as opposed to throwing out this trash, so. It's about it, really. Couple of future agenda items we can get to later.
Sure.
But--
Thank you.
Yeah.
I just want to just briefly mention and thank the Town employees again. I know we've done this a couple weeks, but I had a couple people come up to me and say how thankful they were to have, whether it be a DPW or a PROX employee, go out of their way to actually, you know, talk to them and educate them on what they're doing, and they thought it was nice. So, it's, it's nice to be able to report that, they work hard, they should know that they're valued by their residents, and I think it's important. Other than that, I don't have anything else to report tonight.
I have no report tonight.
So, I have three things. First off, I wanna congratulate, I did go to celebrate Milton, and they had a beautiful day, and they had a great turnout, and it was a good thing for the town.